All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, March fourth. Like to call the meeting to order and our Finance Director will be completing the roll call this morning.
Mr. Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Adolph.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, we do not have an invocation scheduled for this morning, but if you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. Seeing none. Approval of the agenda. Okay, so on the agenda. We do not have any additions other than we have two executive sessions. So um, and that line item is already on there. So I would look for a motion. Uh, to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, the consent agenda uh that we are tabling our commission meeting minutes from February twenty fifth. Um, so we will revisit that next week. Uh, next is the Finance Director Review.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, there uh was no payroll this week. There are no uh credit card bills being paid this week. The total uh AP for the Wednesday, March fifth check date is fifty-two thousand three oh three fifteen. Out of that total, um thirty-seven thousand eight eighty-two sixty-three is the two bond payments that we approved. Last week. Uh, so they are through the AP run now. So the AP runs a little um about twenty thousand this time, so it's lower. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary with those. Pretty light expense week.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Comments. Uh, Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I had a couple of committee. The board meetings, the adult. Uh, Community Corrections Advisory Board and Juvenile Correction Advisory Board meeting. And uh, we had the Director, Katie Sparks, come in and give us uh. An update. And all of those uh. Budget numbers are looking well for. For those two uh entities. And then I had a also set in on the emergency planning. Uh, Committee Meeting. Um. And I am gonna defer to the Director of Emergency Management at some point to come in and update us on their status. Uh, so. Uh, at some point, I don't see him on. So, but we will have him in to give us an update, uh, James Stewart. Uh, when that's when he's available. So that's all I have.
Uh, I had a. Project concern meeting, my first meeting with them. Um. I've got some questions that we need to talk about during our budget workshop. So uh, there's there's some um. Budgetary uh items that we need to get ironed out probably in the near future. So they have a direction of how they're gonna go.
Okay.
Uh, other than that, that's all the thing I have.
Okay. Um, so I had um last Friday, I was able to attend the Conservation District Annual Meeting. And so that was really good to get their annual report um and also learn about some of their budgetary needs um as well. And then last night was my Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Board uh meeting, my first meeting. And um. It was great. It was a lot of information. Um, and we will be having another meeting actually next uh Tuesday evening in Iowa. So. Um, that's what I have as far as updates from my boards. We do not have presentations of petitions or proclamations today. Um, and some of the items that we have discussed in the past. Um, to just follow up on an unfinished business is the Atchison County Road and Bridge Facility. Um. If we're willing to utilize the Senior Village Capital Funds for that. I see, sorry, she sent us updated budgetary quotes. So Road and Bridge went out for um local budgetary quotes. Um, that included all aspects from concrete, electric fence, um, the building, water, utilities, HVAC plumbing. A general contractor fee as well as engineering fees. Um, and the budgetary numbers are coming back in it. Roughly one million, um, basically two million. It's one million seven hundred seventy thousand. And in the Senior Village Capital Fund from sale, uh, we had about, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just shy of one point three million, but the actual total is one million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Okay. And then the collections you're continuing to do.
Yeah, so um. It's difficult to say the least, but um the amount of money that I collected from after the sale. Um, and what's on the books is forty-eight thousand four eighty-nine thirty-eight. Um, I want to preface that though. There's a bill that an invoice or several of them actually that has been going to incorrect. Email addresses of staff that are no longer employed here.
Okay.
So we have about a five thousand dollar bill.
Okay.
Uh, that we need to pay. Uh, it was services we were using after Senior Village sale. So. I think the we should, we 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 need to pay those.
Okay.
So I think that should come out of what we've collected instead of paying it from somewhere else. So that would maybe lower it to forty-three thousand.
Okay. So roughly.
It's about one point three or eight million.
Okay.
Okay, why uh why was this on here for the day?
So just any unfinished business, just to keep keep it at the forefront of discussion. Cause the they're getting budgetary numbers and need to put it out to an RFP if we determine that. Um, the timeline, I think, engineering gave was three to four months. So it's gonna take a while. So just.
Well.
Understanding where each of us, where each of us feel um. As far as as moving forward in a direction. And at the end of the day, we just have to make the decision we feel is good and. It might not be the same decision. I'm fully aware of that, of of that, but I just wanted to have that conversation and see.
Okay, I've I've got concerns for one thing. Um, just very recently, when we were talking about moving forward with this, the facility. It was gonna be. Uh, Senior Village proceeds only. It's already much higher than that. And it's already being perceived that we'll use proceeds from the County Lake. To augment it, to get that done. Uh, first of all, I I don't think we have the. We shouldn't spend all of our cash on hand. I mean, last year it was a major contention that we were gonna spend too much of our cash on hand. And now we're even. We're, we've got less cash than we did a year ago when we had that discussion. And we're talking about selling another asset and using that also. So and until we figure out the budgetary, I mean, how to have. Our county cash balance not go below where we. Where it needs to be plugged in. I I don't think we can go forward with this.
Okay. And since you referenced, not to, I wanna hear everybody, but since you referenced last year, I just want to. Where I remember was we were talking, we were saying. Okay, how do I voice this? So Commissioner thought that we, the county had way too much cash on hand. Um, and we had talked about the number four million dollars being spent uh without these budgetary numbers, right? We got the engineering quote back of seven, something crazy. Um, but we felt like we could do it with four. Um, and. I see this as. There's two different conversations here. The cash that the county has is the reserve cash and then our investments. This Senior Village Capital Sale is separate in a fund. And from the constituents that I've spoke to, and if anybody has an opinion, I'm all for them. They wanna see capital. Funds being put back into a capital expenditure for the county. And this is like a future look of a a need now. That we can look back on and say, okay, we utilize capital funds to make a difference and to continue to accomplish a need um in the county. Uh, so with that being said, I think there's, when you start saying county cash, that that gets misconstrued of. We do have county cash of a reserve of like five hundred thousand plus the investments. We also have debt, right, with our bridge bonds and our. But this capital, I'm just talking about capital. The Senior Village, what we made on selling the building and selling that, being put into a road and bridge facility. And I think that's appropriate to make a a move.
Ultimately, I agree with that. But right now it is doing double duty. We're using that as the cash backing. It's. If we spend all of that, we're we're gonna be way below where we need to be. And earlier we'd also talked about, well, if if we spend that, what are we gonna do? Well, we're gonna have to put it in the budget to. Budget money just for our cash balance to keep our our cash high enough. In the meantime, last year, after all of the this was going on, we. There was ARPA money. That's that's part of the discussion was last year, we had a lot more cash. Part of it's ARPA, which we had to get tied up or spent or under contract before the first of the year. So that is no longer in the picture.
And just the land with it.
We purchased the land, which was a good first step. I mean, I'm I'm not against the facility. I am just very cautious about. How we get this. So we're, we we don't deplete. What's in the books. If we could somehow uh raise enough other cash and then use this, it's kind of a shell game. I mean, you're, it's it you. It's here. It's what we would use for backup. Now, we spend it all, it's gonna be. We're gonna, we're not gonna have any.
So I I wanna say this with respect, and when you say the word shell game, it makes my stomach hurt because that's what I felt like we've been doing. The past few years, the way we're budgeting is we're getting down to the needs for the services. And then we're not happy with what that mill levy looks like. So we choose another mill levy that'll look good to the public. Well, then that leaves us with. You know, you have to supplement with cash. And to see, you know, we put in. Over over eight hundred thousand dollars of cash in our budget last year. Just to make it look good to the public. And to me, that's sickening in the fact of what eight hundred thousand dollars could do to make. An improvement in the future of our county that we can actually look back in several years and go, you know what? That was spent and it's still there and we're still utilizing it. It's bringing the efficiencies that the road and bridge. Uh, this, I'm using this as a specific example, but the efficiencies that have been laid out that we all all agree that there's a need, right? So. I just, I think it's um fiscally responsible to use capital expenditure funds to reinvest in a capital need.
But the unintended consequence is gonna be, we're gonna have to. Raise the mill levy to replenish your cash balances.
So we have to raise the mill levy to to account. Account for the eight hundred thousand we pumped in it last year and have nothing to show. And then. That fund of Senior Village was not offsetting our.
No, no, it's in its own fund.
So.
It's in its own fund, but it's also doing double. It it's it's there for a backup. We we have cash on hand. It's it's there for backup. And it's much lower. Last year, we complained that it wasn't high enough last year when we had. ARPA, we had all this other cash sitting there. And now we have much less cash and we're willing to spend it. So um, this is gonna be an ongoing uh. Way of looking at it. If there was some way of bumping up our cash reserve, ultimately, I'd like to see the the capital. Improvement from go from one to the other, but I just don't know how we make up for that. Uh, we're gonna be spending down to nothing if we spend that money that's sitting there. So.
Yeah, I I'd like to weigh in and just say that uh, we're not, we haven't signed on the dotted line. On on, you know, this this project. So we're we're gathering figures, we're gathering information. And because we are every commission gathering that information, we need to put it out to the public. So that's what. I think is a good thing that we are putting it out there. Um, anybody that has any question can weigh in. This is a public meeting. Um, they can get ahold of either one of us. And uh, but but this, that's all this is. We're still in the beginning stages of this. Thought process and planning process. And so uh.
But I think we need to much, not just find out what the facility costs, but what we're gonna have to budget. Uh, here in just a couple of months to make up. If we're gonna have to put a couple, two, three mills on for uh cash reserve.
Mm-hmm.
On top of everything else, that's where I'm having a problem. So.
Right, yeah. No, that's that's, we'll discuss that when we start budgeting.
Just wanna keep it at the forefront. So we we keep, we keep talking, cause we're, we have our staff doing things behind the scenes and we need to keep that um kinda going. So. Uh, the unfinished business, we're gonna go ahead and roll the rest of that to the bottom because we have guests today and it's ten seventeen. So we're gonna invite Scott Erickson, please. With the Sports Complex update um of the Capital Project Priority List. Uh, if you wanna come up here, sir. It, under the microphone, it's just easier. Nick, we can bring a seat up or Derek, you wanna seat up here?
No, we wanna watch him.
Okay.
I'm here for the show.
Okay. What, thanks. What did you want exactly?
Uh, we so, we were just touching base. Um, two years, December of twenty-two. Well, we allocated four hundred to Atchison, a hundred to Effingham and just uh Effingham came last week and gave us kind of an update on their projects and. Additional needs um and different things. And so we just kinda wanted to re. Get together and recap where you're at and what, you know, I know we're. Incrementally signing off on purchase orders for the new concession and restroom. So just kind of fill us in, what's going on?
All right, we got all those um, a lot of those. Uh, projects finished. Right now, we're just waiting to finish up on that. The restroom concession stand. Um, and I don't know if they've submitted all the bills to.
We did. I feel like the last one was last week um that we did for L and L for like twenty or twenty.
Okay, so I'm not sure what the total has been. Um, that we've used of that four hundred. Um, cause I'm not sure what's been submitted or what not submitted.
Okay.
I think it was a hundred and eighty-nine was the total. For that. I didn't know what the total was that we've spent so far out of that four hundred. I I I thought it was around three hundred and twelve thousand, but I don't know if that's correct or not. I'm just gonna guess. If that sounds right or not.
So the first one, the restroom concessions, well, Mark's looking that up. That's done. Do you have this list?
Um, I have a different list.
Okay.
An updated list for.
Okay.
Future ones.
Okay.
I don't have that one. But yeah, we we uh. I don't know, we redid that, the parking lot area. Um.
Fault repair.
Yeah.
And asphalt.
Well, we haven't done the asphalt. Um, we we had one point thought about maybe asphalt in that new parking lot, but it was really, really. Expensive, so we just rocked that.
The north parking lot?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So rock instead, okay?
Yep. We did Field Three. Um, turned that into a um T-ball, little kids field. Um, and then we have the playground um set up. So all those um have been completed. And had quite a few compliments about that. People are very happy about the parking lot and the playground thing, so.
And the restroom.
That is.
I've heard somebody.
Yep, but we're, yeah, excited to get that one done too, so.
So, and you expanded the north parking area too.
Yeah, yeah, people, yeah. They really liked that instead of parking down in the elementary school.
Uh, reconditioning of baseball softball infield?
We did that on Field Three to make that, you know, a smaller field to create the larger parking lot and then put the playground out there too.
Shade for baseball softball field spectators?
Yeah, that would be a upcoming one we'd like to do.
And the asphalt repair and asphalt resurfacing are still thing, are still.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically three left.
Yeah. We have um. I don't know, I've made so many lists for the sports complex before that I, then we had the. Yeah.
We were saying that, we're like, even with that, like Effingham too, we're like, okay, here's a list and here's a list. Like, so just getting a new list is.
Yeah, these are the ones that um I was kinda looking at.
Thank you.
And and the asphalt and steel one, the price might be different than what it is on there just cause it's been a while since I. And I tried to get um, oh, who's the company you guys use before from, see from Bonner?
Hold on.
Little J.
Little J, thank you, thank you, Eric. I'm like, a little something, but I.
Yeah. And I've tried to get them to give me, uh, I've had a difficult time dealing with them, trying to get them to do stuff. I mean, they come up and um. Gave us a bid and then they said, well, we can do it then. And then they, uh, we didn't have time to do it. So I don't know if we need to look somewhere else to get it completed or not.
We may try to find out who's gonna do the asphalt repair around the new college building up there. See if we can. Get with them, cause it's, as you know, it's the transportation of equipment to to the a a pretty good percentage of the project. So. But what we have to do, um, I think we can uh work with them and hopefully get a negotiated price, get more per month. Gotta wait for asphalt to.
Yeah.
Almost here.
Um, all right, I don't.
Then I have.
Yeah.
Expense.
Thank you.
For last year. Just maintaining it forever. So I thought you might want that too.
Yeah, thank you. And did you watch our, I don't know if you watched last week's with Effingham's update, but um roughly we have one point eight million. And then. If we continue the sales tax till the end of twenty twenty-seven, roughly, it's ironic, but another one point eight million is what's projected. So.
Okay.
Just to kind of reiterate that to the public that there's funds there, if there's needs there, let's let's do some stuff. So. Anyway, so.
There's stuff always you can do out there. That's that's the deal with that. So.
Um, just real quick, so Mark, we're we're bringing in about six hundred thousand a year from that sales tax. Okay, so. Do we have a, an idea just for maintenance and upkeep annual? Uh, this looks, I mean, I. So you're saying maintenance and upkeep is. Okay.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then we're waiting on that figure from Effingham. I think we asked for them to give us that update. So we're waiting.
Yeah, so they came with a list as well and they were getting together to prioritize what that looks like. Um, so that we can. Basically see what we allocated before and then compared to what was actually spent. And then now you have a new list, so we can work off this.
Okay.
Um. Uh, question, so on the expenditures, well, actually I can see, that's just your annual. Is the irrigation, like, I'm just curious to understand, is irrigation system like just the everyday expense of running it? Or was there an issue with it that we had to like fix maintenance?
Maintenance.
Got it.
Yep, fixing, getting room, parts and that kinda stuff to repairs, sprinkling heads or breaks or, yeah.
So do you carry like a maintenance contractor or not? Or is there someone that you just do it yourself?
Yep, yep.
Sometimes it's like lawn services do that type of.
Yeah. Yeah, we used to have uh. Urbans do some of the stuff, but we we try and do it all ourselves, yeah. Everything we can.
And on equipment repair, so is there equipment owned by the sports complex that we're repairing? Like, is that, what is that example?
Um, like, uh, for example, be a mower or the gator out there. Might need repaired. I'm guessing that's what I, that's what it was. That gator that we had got repaired.
Does this seem to be a pretty good, can we rely on this figure pretty much? I mean, do you have an average? Is there a way to get an average?
Yeah.
The last few years.
Yeah, it's probably right around one twenty.
Okay.
I mean, it's gone up every year a little bit, so.
All right.
I think when we first started was like at a hundred and eleven thousand, maybe.
Sure. And you're gonna have, you know, you're gonna have higher years because. That's what are gonna happen.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Uh, how often, you know, I walked through that complex the other day because I just hadn't been out there.
Sure.
Years. Um, how often do you change bulbs? I mean, I, that's one of those questions, you know, you know, the lighting. Around the, I mean, I can't, cause that's gotta be one heck of a.
Yeah, we have.
Just to change my one.
Yeah.
Well, that was one of the.
Yeah.
Things I mentioned too. Um, cause we're coming on to twenty years old and those are uh. Hayite bulbs, bulbs, uh, very, at at the time, it was state of the art. Um, when we put them in in two thousand and six, um, as you know, with the bulbs and lighting is totally changed. So. I told him, I said, hey, this is a great time to change all these out, the L L LEDs. Um, and we we just thought about it way too late. Uh, that's something you don't wanna do in the summertime. You wanna do when it's cold, cause the ground's froze, so it doesn't make it rut in your, in your fields. So I think that's something um. That we're gonna try to get some good quotes on. Really like to use some local guys on this, but it may have to go to someone like. Power Electric or something like that, because once you bring those trees down, you gotta rewire them. It's not like we just unscrew bulbs and screw an LED in. So. We we may see and get some cooperation through Stress Creek. I think they helped us on the last ones. Uh, try to work with those guys and see if we can't find the bulbs and supply them. Short of making a markup for the contractor and just hire a contractor just to change out complete trees. That's probably the best way to do. But you know what? We're gonna take suggestions and get some good ideas. And I would suggest the same thing for, cause they're the same lights for uh us. Here in Atchison, city of Atchison as it is in Effingham. So that would be a good thing for them to have on their list too. And then that way, it's just, it's just great. But they're gonna get a test today at fifty, sixty mile an hour wind today and tonight, we're gonna. So I don't know that we've ever seen winds that strong around here, but anyway, uh, that's uh. We're we're gonna send out an RFP on that on some different people and see if we can't get some ideas where we're at.
Just gonna add that to her.
Yeah.
Is the new, is tall agenda is the 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 new, what you're going to?
LED.
LED.
You think that's.
Light the many.
It's too much for Gerber, or would you?
Yeah, they're getting kinda out of that stuff, you know, and it's, you know, we may have to check again, Capital Electric or just. You just send out an RFP and you find out who does, you know, find out from different school districts and.
Yep.
Who does that kinda stuff and just send them, hey, we sure like for you to look at this. But everybody in the world's doing the same thing, so they're trying to squeeze it all in in a short amount of time when it's cold out. Or not make ruts. We definitely don't want ruts.
And then help me understand, I went out to Effingham, cause I've never been to their. Complex. It's just two fields on the backside of the the school, right?
Well, they have uh, they have both the baseball and the softball field. And then the big lot you see to the west.
Uh-huh.
That's a soccer field that they, it was a multipurpose field. It's what, what they do with it. I don't have any idea, but practice football or I don't know what they do.
Okay.
So anyway, it's a multipurpose. It was set up, we were. Soccer was catching on a whole lot faster in the city of Atchison than what it was out there. And we encouraged them, hey. Everybody's gonna be doing this, especially little kids. They have little kid programs or something like that. So we encouraged them to take the land, you know, and and let us, it's it's not irrigated. Uh, I don't think it is. I don't think it's irrigated.
I don't think so.
Yeah. I think the only thing that's uh sprinkled is the two baseball fields out there. They had a few other little things because Steve was on the committee and and it. They had a few other little things, because Steve was on the committee and, and it was the principal superintendent out there. He was a baseball guy, so they, they modified a few things, which was great, I wish we would have done it here in Atchison at the time too, so. But they got great feels compared to what they had. It's, it's fantastic.
Um, on, what's the sports complex other? For expenditures?
Yes, down, oh, it's down there below.
Aster, yeah.
Purchase soccer benches, rented tents.
Yeah.
Okay, so with the new restrooms, then actually.
Yeah, yep.
Nice. And miscellaneous is just a smaller amount, but just unaccounted for, probably just.
Yeah.
Awesome, um. So. This is pretty, you're solid on this, adding the LED lighting, and this is your solid list, because I'm just. We can do some, find out from the four hundred where we're at, but number wise. And if we need to allocate more, we can do that, I mean, I, I feel like we need to get the money in. With the needs, like, there's needs.
Yeah.
That, you know, we're generating.
Yeah, like asphalt coating and stuff like that on that list.
Yeah.
Asphalt seal.
Yeah, yeah. And that might end up to be more than what I have on there, so.
I don't know what Saudi Arabia is gonna do.
Do you guys have other questions for Mr. Erickson?
I mean, we, did you mention Sunset, you mentioned the Sunset, I think, early, earlier.
December twenty twenty seven is what it's set for.
So, um, I mean, at some point, we need to discuss moving forward, what, what the plan is. You know, and I, I know somebody in this room's got some idea of what, what that should be, and we're, we're working towards that. I see the numbers on, on, on what I'm seeing from, from here in Atchison and, and out at Effingham, that. They understand that there is a surplus and there's gonna be some money coming in, so they're planning ahead and getting some of the things done. To utilize those, those funds, um, uh, but then beyond that, then there's a question, what, what do we do? So, I, I, I'd like to hear from, from you folks.
I think Derek has a good idea.
Well, and I've discussed it with Pat a little bit, you know, just trying to be prepared and, and I haven't talked with any of you, and I don't know if this is the right time to do it, but. Um, you, you guys wanna be fiscally responsible, and that's your job, you're, you're fiduciary. Of our tax dollars, and we wanna make sure that happens, and, uh, the other common denominator we have here is we're all taxpayers. You don't get an exemption, cause you're a commissioner, or a discount, so we're gonna overcollect. And I think back to, um, my experience with this. I think I'm the only guy in this room, uh, when the jail was overcollected. They overcollected on their one cent sales tax when they built the jail, and it was supposed to sunset, well, it was supposed to be till all bills were paid. And they overcollected by quite a bit, uh, but they didn't have the provision in there and what to do with the money. Um, I would, I would like to come up with a plan to, um. Any of the overreach that's collected, this, this is a two-part statement, ovaries that's collected. Uh, be set aside in a, a fund through the county. That's only dedicated to the sports complex in Atchison, gate cut. The percentage to go out to Effingham, cause that property, once, once this bond is extinguished. That property belongs to three seventy seven, that's the way it's written up, that's the way Don and I and Steve Shipman and the whole board. Got this thing to get passed, cause we wasn't gonna get it passed without participation from the rural area. Or USD three seventy seven, so. They still have a, they're entitled to a portion of those, uh, funds that's being collected. For maintenance or whatever you deem as overreach, right now, I seen, uh, I was fortunate enough to see. The amounts that you have right now, and, and, uh, you have the amount. Uh, I just hope you don't pay it off yet, just, I'm, I'm encouraging you not to pay this thing off yet and continue to collect. To set up the fund, you can set this up similar to a, uh. A type of maintenance fund where only, uh, five percent of the original fund amount. Would be dedicated to maintenance of Atchison County. I mentioned three seventy seven, I think they have a, an endowment type of fund out there for athletics. I wanna assume they do, cause four oh nine does, they have a, a, a set aside education fund or something like that. I'm not getting into their business, either one of them, but if we had something like that here, where it's going to supplement. To the maintenance and continued success of our facility here, you, the county still maintains ownership. That's what really needs to happen, there's a reason for that, and I can visit with you about that sometime. But you really wanna stay, stay in control of that facility, you can set up a fund. Where you can just draw out it, at up to five percent with a contrib, uh, contribution that comes from. The manager, which is Atchison Recreation, between the two, it's going to keep all of our taxes lower for the community. We don't have to go to add the lower impacts. And ask for an increase to take care of this thing, once all the money's gone in another twenty years. That's my first plea, uh, or suggestion, and I think it can be done. Uh, I think it can be done because it's written in the, uh, sales tax thing, uh, the, the bill itself, that. The maintenance would be collected, and it has the word maintenance in it, and we still use it as maintenance and upkeep. We're still abiding by what the taxpayers voted for.
Uh, are you saying keep the quarter cent on, or do you say, or just, okay?
We're gonna keep it on and continue to collect it, it's a, it's a, it's, it's twenty five cents per hundred dollars.
You're beyond the twenty twenty seven?
No, not at all.
Okay.
I, I want it to sunset.
Yeah.
I want it to sunset, because what that does is, that tells the community that's still alive and that voted for it. This is how we do projects. This is how we do projects and everyone participates, and we get them done, so. With that said, I would encourage the county, even if you shortened it, but it's up to you. But if you continue that quarter cent sales tax and you get information out. Where you're gonna have an election coming up here in, in November, it can go in effect and take over as soon as this. The, 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 uh, sports complex quarter cent sales tax is done. That you come up with another project, I'm just hypothetically saying, you know, if you wanna build a county barn, if you wanted to use it for something. You find a project that you're only gonna need, you know, you're getting six hundred thousand dollars. That nobody feels, I'm gonna take, I wanna offer this observation, the quarter cent sales tax. That we save each and every person in, in Atchison County from the. Uh, trash and solid waste and communications that we're saving now. I don't quite have enough to book a cruise, does that make sense? If we kept that on as another county project, so it doesn't come back on avalanche impact. That would be awesome, and I would encourage you to come up with a few individuals, if you choose. To come up with a, 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 a project that, again, would, if we. Pass the verbiage to where it starts, right when the sports complex is paid off. It's seamless and no one feels it. Cause by judging what happened the last couple of years in budget time, we don't need anymore avalanche impacts. That's just my, my soapbox plea and suggestion, and, uh, I'd sure like to, we don't have to do it today, but. Thank God, we're not on television.
Appreciate you, like, thank you for the feedback.
Yeah, if we can, yeah, if you can overcollect it, the, the larger you can overcollect it, the better. I don't know what enough of enough is, but, you know, uh, five percent, five percent of a million dollars is fifty thousand dollars. Five percent of two million dollars is a hundred thousand dollars, you can see where our. Uh, our expenses run about, uh, a buck twenty five a year, uh, that's not gonna get cheaper. Water, we're on the city water system now, and city water is just gonna increase in, in price. The fertilizers are gonna get higher, the overseeding's gonna get higher, the needs are gonna be there, so if we have something that can increase in value. With interest, just because, uh, just because it's a five percent draw off of it, hopefully, we're making over five percent. With the investment, I know that sounds more like a, a business idea more than a, uh, municipality idea. But hopefully, I, uh, I haven't, in the conversation that I've had with county council. Uh, setting up a separate endowment board may not be possible, and, uh, in my discussions with other people. Uh, they're not really familiar with doing anything like that, however, our return on investment would probably be higher. But, and I would encourage also that, I always, Don and I always wanted to work our way out of a job. With Atchison Sports and Fitness, ASAF, however, I still would encourage, even after these are paid off. Have Atchison Sports and Fitness still involved as a mediator, similar to your, uh, Memorial Hall trustees. Just for the simple reason, there's a lot of, uh, trusts and, uh. People that don't donate to municipalities, but they will donate to a five oh one three C as in ASAF. And that, that way they can be a, a middleman to continue to, uh, receive, uh. Trust payments or bequeaths or, you know, uh, scheduled planning. I always told Don Ball, I said, we've already named them all after you, every one of them's a ball field, so he's not even gonna fit himself. Uh, there may be somebody that'd like to do that.
I think a lot of that will be kinda slightly in your hands, because if you go for. The turf and soccer fields at a million five hundred thousand, you know, there's not gonna be anything left. So, it's, it's, I'd be judicious, you know, in your, what you decide, improvements you, you want. And things that maybe don't cost a lot for your maintenance in the long run, uh, you know, the, the LED lighting would be a cost saver. On your, you know, and that, have that eye towards what it's gonna take to maintain this fifteen, twenty years. And if it's something that's a high maintenance item, that may have to take a backseat to, so we can do what you're saying.
Well, I would encourage, it, it's, it's gonna be in your hands, really, to, cause it still, uh, comes through you guys. You guys are the owners, you're the sponsor taxing entity that handles the cash, so, I think. Between, uh. The, the sports complexes and the, the county owner, I think we can make this to where. It is very, uh, uh, very appealing to the taxpayer. If you, we may have to explain it a little bit, but I think in the end, if we just say, hey, it's not gonna cost you. A whole bunch of money at the end when it's paid off.
Yeah, Derek, that you've done, you know, the right thing, this, all of us that played on. You know, Memorial Park, Fourteenth and Laramie, all those years, you know, there's no doubt that this was, this was the good way to go, this was a good investment. So, it's just, it's just a matter of how we maintain it moving forward, so.
Well, I think, you know, we, 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 we have, uh, we have such a, a beautiful facility. Uh, there was things that, that didn't happen, uh, because we just, we, we got so much more of the facility built. And done with very limited funds, and what's really great is we're able to finish up a lot of these projects at the end. Nobody ever dreamed that there'd be this type of, uh, monies available, it wasn't even on our performat. You know, I think, uh, it was funny, I think I told you even that, uh, what's a quarter cent bring in? Oh, I don't know, four hundred thousand, maybe four fifty, I mean, it's six hundred thousand dollars, I wouldn't ever even dream that. And with that said, that's the reason I'm really encouraged by what the next project is. And hopefully, it isn't twenty years long, I wanna be able to see them done, I wanna see them in ten-year increments, and, uh. What a great way to, to build up our, our facilities in our community. Without tagging avalanche tax.
Um, I have a quick question for you as the ASAF, uh, third-party LLC member, um, because some of the.
Five oh one three C, we're not LLC.
Five oh one, see, sorry, um, but, so, feedback from constituents since our, our town hall, right, is. Is knowing and going back to your, nobody can take any more avalanche taxes, right, so, um, one of the concerns of. Atchison Recreation as a middle levy puller of three point five, whatever, through the USD four oh nine budget. Versus something private such as Atchison YMCA, right, that's privately funded. Those things, do you have a feel or where you sit with that? Or is that gonna be more of, let's all sit at a table and weigh the pros and the cons of how we work together? And look forward to the vision of Atchison County in years to come, right, like?
Uh, well, in my opinion, uh, man, this is strictly I am on, uh, in my opinion. The dynamics have changed, uh, even before, uh, they, they changed before our, um. Our, our Memorial Hall meeting we had a, a year or two ago, uh, YMCA is, is a Kansas City YMCA. So, they're, and they're not tax-supported, uh, where. Three, uh, where the Atchison Recreation is an overlay mill opportunity on the four oh nine patrons only. So, it's not county-wide, it's just four oh nine patrons, but all are welcome to use it, no one has ever turned away. Uh, so my, that's my knowledge, oh, thank you, uh, so. I really, I think what we have now, with the dynamics that we have now, I think it's. Being on the Y board in, in the early two thousands, we needed something like the sports complex. Because there would have been a funding opportunity there to kinda help us through the, the, the way. I got off the board in oh five, we started this project in oh six, of, of the YMCA, so. There was always a look to combine the two, or there was always a push to combine both Atchison Recreation and YMCA. I think the dynamics have changed, uh, now you have Livwell, Atchison, you have the YMCA, you have. Atchison Recreation, which has a long, long track record of, of. Taking, taking the needs of the Atchison City proper and the four oh nine district. Uh, they've taken very good, very good care of the needs of sports recreation. Or just any recreation, shoot, they just put on a father-son dance or a father-daughter dance or something.
Four hundred people.
I mean, you know, isn't that wonderful?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, I think that's, I, I think that's, they, they've stretched out, uh, when I went through there. I'm the reason they have pads on the, on the columns, was I smacked it real good when I was in the third grade. Heard wiring, that was probably one of his first, oh my gosh, but it's, it's, I think keeping it very similar to the way we have it. Uh, is a good way to do it, it, I don't know that. I don't know that the, this expense, trust me, is in a, a full value of the other things. That Atchison Recreation contributes to the supervision and, and the, uh. Organization of the sports complex, uh, you know, if they factored in, you know, a portion of his salary and his salary. You know, it did all of those things. Uh, you know, if they factored in, you know, a portion of his salary and his salary, and, you know, it did all of those things. Uh, there's, it's, it's a great tribute to what a project does for a community. So, I mean, quite, quite frankly, you don't have very many outside interests coming in and throwing content or uh, tournaments or anything, do you? Now, see, we're just too close to Kansas City, I mean, just right down forty-five highway is a mammoth. Facility and we don't have enough things for kids to do and parents to do and families to do in between games. I mean, we just, we just don't have enough things, uh, where you can go to all sorts of activities in the Kansas City metro area. In between games, I mean, we, uh, we've all participated with our own children and you'll find it with yours. As there's, they want to go play in the morning, well, they want to go hang out at a mall or, or go to the water park or something like that. Uh, that, uh, in between games and then they play a later game at four o'clock. So, we just don't have that type of infrastructure in our community. It'd be great if we did, but that's usually our biggest complaint, we've been trying to get tournaments in here for years.
When, when we ran those, we did have tournaments at one point in time, but that was the biggest. The feedback that we got was there's nothing for us to do in between, you know, if there was a four hour break, they wanted to go do something.
It's hard to control a bunch of nine, nine-year-olds. We could go send them to go play golf, but they don't want to work, they'll never hear that.
Guys have any other questions?
Well, again, I encourage the commission uh, to, the time is kind of on your side, you gotta. Uh, I think you got to, you know, to come together with a plan for the future use of that, because. There's, I'm sure, as I've told a, a few individuals, there is a place two blocks from here looking at the same quarter cent. And uh, I'm sure, I don't know.
I, I think you're uh, coming back to the meeting that we had at Memorial Hall, because at that time. The com- the commission was really unaware of the, the needs of the, the next phase or the, that.
Well, we didn't know you had extra money.
Yeah, and so, I mean, we had been, at that point, was when we were talking about paying off Fertis, like, look. Evidently they're done, we haven't had any asks, so that was kind of the thinking at the time, but I think. From what I've heard, it's like, let it go to the end of its natural course.
Get as much as you can, and again, the, the, what I think, it's really hard to ask. To put it back on after it's been off. So, make sure that we have, make sure that the county has something in mind, as far as the sports complex. We're good, we're good, we're not, we're good with everything we have planned. We'll, we'll be fine, I, again, we'll be fine.
One other quick question, uh, the history of that percentage split. I've been asked from some patrons in Effingham of, how, how was that developed? And can that be modified? And I feel the answer was it could be modified by the Board of County Commission.
Well, you do what you want, our, our facility is about, it had uh. Of a dollar bill, it had eight dollar, it had eight dollar, or eighty cents of, of, of area. You know, we had nine fields, yeah, we had nine fields, they had three. Uh, that's, it was an arbitrary number we came up with, uh. Everybody likes to have more money, I get it.
I was just curious because I couldn't really find that in the history of like, how, but nine fields, three fields, that was the discussion, that makes. At least there's the.
Yeah, we had, uh, we had, what, the three uppers and three lowers and then the three soccer fields. The long football field or two smaller than, yeah. And it was just, it was just the agreement we, we had at the time. What the, they were happy with it, we were happy with it. And it's just one of those things, you just, it's, I'll go back to the, as I was involved with the uh. Solid waste and communication percentage, twenty-nine percent was a good number when it was a good number. Well, we all just agreed on it, I was, I was on that committee, I just. I just didn't want to get charged sixty-two dollars on every piece of property I own.
So, when this baby was born, ASAF worked with the Board of County Commission, and then did USD three seventy-seven have a. Committee and you all kind of sat together, because you were saying everybody kind of just agreed that this is good. I was just trying to understand the history because also, like. At the end of it, I'm sure you guys maybe talked about, like, what does that look like at the end of it, and.
We were just hoping to get a bill, um, we, well, to be honest with you, even with maintenance, it was going to run out in sixteen. Yeah, and Jack Bauer was, he says, I think we can make this work, and uh, I credit, you were on there, I believe, that. Uh, you two guys having vision enough, because I said, are you guys ready to put this on as an Adveriorum ad? Cause then he said, let me see what I can do, and he, he's very creative in making that work, well, do you guys? So, the way it started, I mean, it was a economic development project from ED. Uh, uh, the, that was also involved with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, Don and I were both on that committee at the time. And uh, it was right after the city of Atchison had just lost a, a vote on um. Uh, political reasons on, on a, on, uh, trying to modify. Some things in their governmental expenditures. So, they said, hey, you ain't gonna support us there, we ain't gonna support you, you're gonna find your own sponsors. So, we went around with hat in hand, uh, went to school warden, we, we can't take on anymore. And then uh, we went all around with the uh, so we finally came to the county and said, hey. Will, if we can work with the western side of the county, uh, I think Floyd was on at that time. Maybe Mike, I can't remember, but.
Maybe it was Floyd.
Yeah, it might have been Floyd, and I talked to Floyd, I said, Floyd, this is the way we can leave a legacy out there on that, that side of town, got a hold of Steve shipment. Uh, he says, oh yeah, we need a ball field bad, he said, we need two of them, and I said, well, let's see what we can do to work this thing together. It was pretty much uh, uh, just at, of course, he worked through his board, anybody knew Steve, he was a pretty strong guy. So, ASAF and, and Steve shipment pretty much worked together on it. Uh, at the time, it wasn't available for us to list Atchison Recreation as the managing partner. So we just, we did, we, we just said, we gotta get it built, we get it built, we'll find a manager. Uh, you know, YMCA come up at the time, just different individuals and how we're gonna do it. However, the farther we got into it, it was a two-year pro- process, I mean, we got it built in one year and then got to get the grass to grow for a year. So, you know, in that year, uh, we started looking around and trying to really figure what's this gonna take? You know, how are you, how do you want to do this? Or is it something we want to go out and fundraise, or we're gonna depend on tournaments? You know, we've already, we, we had great advice for adult tournaments, you're gonna have to serve beer, you're gonna have to have alcohol. Uh, Herb was not in favor of that at the time, and uh, he made that very clear. And said, well, we're gonna figure out how to do this, uh, because it's, you're gonna have to have a tax-supporting. Entity, you know, the city wasn't taking care of the ball fields, I mean, am I saying any, am I missing anything? So, anyway, it really worked out, they were willing to contribute, uh, the difference of what it was taking. To uh, to, to do this, we wanted to keep the entrance fees very low. Uh, so, that's the reason, uh, they calculated how much it was taking them to take care of all the inside of all the city-owned fields. So, I, they had a board that they worked with, uh, ASAF was the front person for it. Uh, three seventy-seven said, hey, if we get some fields here, we'll do whatever it takes. I think it was uh, as far as the twenty-eighty split, uh, that was just done between. It was pretty much between Don, Steve and I. But uh, did we have any, I'm sure, I'm sure Steve probably worked through. Uh, I mean, Steve wasn't one to operate too much without, outside of his uh, board. But I'm sure he took concerns from those guys also. But, again, we were all looking at a great asset we were gonna have for our total community, so.
Awesome, thank you for that, I just appreciate.
Hopefully that.
The history, no.
It wasn't, it wasn't, I mean, you asked me something that happened twenty years ago, but it wasn't willy-nilly, I mean.
No, yeah, it's just because some, those are the questions I get from people and I'm like, I don't know, it's two thousand and six, like, I, I'm not sure.
Well, we were, I mean, we, we, you gotta fertilize, you gotta seed, you gotta do all these things, and we just had about eighty percent of the total acreage. So, I think that's kind of how it came down.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for all that.
Yeah, it's really.
Yeah, you'll read it in the book someday if I remember. Anything else you need from us?
Good, yeah, we'll be uh, in touch once we do our due diligence on the backend to see where we're at and.
Yeah, just.
We want to support the efforts, we're all in, like, like Eric said, we don't know the needs and, when we know.
Well, again, it's fluid, each change. Have they have in the last nineteen years?
Awesome, thank you guys. Right, it's eleven, we have Holly Hackathorne, county appraiser, purchase order for consideration. That's for our ARC map license, I'm seeing, so last year we went ahead and combined. Um, the Appraisers Office and the GIS Department, um, and uh, budgeted five thousand dollars for it. Um, and it is forty-eight sixty-five total.
A good budget projection right there. I would look for a motion to approve that Atchison County Purchase Order as presented by our Appraiser to ESRI. For the twenty-twenty-five ESRI desktop licensing, um, and our ARC GIS publisher licensing. And the amount of four thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, this will come out of the Appraisers Contractual Services uh, budget line item.
Dave, alright, no, yeah, it should be, it's GIS, sorry, it's the GIS Contractual Services line item.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye, passes. Three to zero.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Did you get your in person values done?
I am finalizing and running reports, um, and I'm gonna stay in contact with. The uh, the mailing company and hopefully Friday. Would be our date.
Very good. Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you. Not here yet, okay, so, and a couple minutes, Mr. Tutte, um, from Moken Regional Council will be coming in. Do we want to jump back up to unfinished business for a bit, that way, okay, so the county road right-of-way discussion. Um, just wanted to follow up on that, uh, with you guys, um, so, um. Our Roden Bridge Department, um, have expressed concerns and, and we, we notated the concerns during, during the snowstorms, right? Of, of items in the county ri- right-of-way, um. So, just wanted to talk through what that looks like, um, I think this is a pretty easy discussion in my, in my mind, right? Cause county right-of-way, it's our right-of-way, we're working in it all the time, we're pushing snow, we're mowing, we're doing all the things. And having objects in that right-of-way poses risks, poses problems, so, um, I had, I guess what's. I, I want to hear from you guys, like, the goal, right? Cause for me, the goal is with my constituents, with items in the right-of-way. Get them removed, now how do we go about doing that, right? So, my two most recent instant, instances since the snowstorm. I contacted them via phone, great conversations, they're, they very much understood the problem. And they very much stated that they would help me get that problem cleaned up. Um, I then followed up in writing with them, um, in a text, because I monitor it, drove by, make sure, oh. Another snowstorm's coming, nothing's been done, you know, so following up in writing, also documenting that with Roden Bridge. Um, and I haven't seen any progress on, on just the two that I have been made aware of. So, um, I had asked the county counselor a few questions of like, are we as the county allowed to remove property from the right-of-way? Um, the answer is yes, we have the authority to remove the property, um. I guess. I kind of want to hear your input on how we achieve our goal, because the goal is to get things out of the property, out of the right-of-way. I don't know that a monetary. I mean, at the end of the day too, like, I have so many perspectives on this, because yes, we have the ability. But we know that the needs of our Roden Bridge crew needs to be taking care of our roads and bridge, road and bridges. And not going out and babysitting all the people that won't comply with getting stuff off of our right-of-way, right? So, what is, I mean, I'm, I'm looking for you guys, like, because a part of me is like, well, if you want a solution, just go clean it up, right? Get it off the right-of-way, but that doesn't help us long term of, oh, well, you know. You're gonna ask me to do it, but if I don't, you're gonna clean it up, you know, yourself, well, we need to focus on our, our job duties of Roden Bridge.
So, so I'll, I just, I got one comment next week. Uh, I had a discussion with Pat over nuisance uh, issues, which are very similar to. Right-of-way issues, they're, they're, they're very similar. Well, there is, it's, it's, it's an overlap, and so, he had a, he had an opinion on how to handle nuisances. And I was gonna ask him, the civil injunction you were talking about is, does, would it work the same way for. Uh, right-of-way, and why wouldn't it, if, if it works for.
If, if it would, um. Versus fighting, because you're talking about fighting.
Well, I was just reading.
With the, no, there are other counties that do that, there are other counties that have a schedule of, of, you know, how they handle it. And so much per month, and if it's not, and then they go after it themselves, but that, when we talked, so that. The civil injunction discovered a way around that, you, you don't have to deal with those, you know, the schedule of fighting that, that we were talking about. It's a, it's a more direct route. There, there are some statutes that have uh, penalties for violations, but the penalties are pretty low. Um, and one of them, I think it's ten dollars a day, and. That doesn't, doesn't get, uh, so, doesn't grab someone's attention, really. It also depends on what we're talking about, if we're talking about one car that's disabled car that's in the right-of-way. That's a lot easier than if you're talking about a quarter mile where you've got literally dozens of items of equipment. And we do have a situation where we have that in the county, maybe two.
Yeah, I don't think that the finding has been too successful really on the uh. Nuisance, because they just pay the fine, and then, again, when would that start? When would be, if they never clean it up? Do you wait a year, is it just that, a charge a year, I mean, or should the fines be progressively worse? They don't, the next time, say in three months, then if it's refiled a nuisance suit against them, then it would be a higher penalty. But I was wondering about on the right-of-way, instead of calling a, a, a fine. The county would remove the property and charge them for the, the act of having to remove it. If the Roden Bridge was, uh, takes four guys so many hours. That's then, then we actually remove it, but then they're only paying for the, uh, would have to pay for. Our time and our effort to remove the, the property. And I, and I guess it would just be to remove it further onto their property, just so along this, so we're not taking it, we're not. That, there would be nothing except for the move, the moving of the property, wouldn't be the way I would kind of envision it. And then it's done, and instead of just a fine, or the fine don't make the county any money. We're, we don't want the fine money, we want it moved, so then they would actually be paying for, to have it. And they wouldn't have to do it themselves, so that's the way I would envision it.
Other counties are doing that, um, from my listserv, they are going in, removing it themselves and then charging it to, to the people. Kinda like the weed ordinances in the city, right? Like if you have to mow it, you're gonna get dinged with it. Um I guess, is that something we could do? And two, can we set the rate? Like, forget covering our costs. Can we say twenty-five hundred bucks if we have to come out? Take our guys off of a job to clean up what you should be doing, you know, can we, and I just threw that number out, like as a, like, hey. Cause if I get something that it's like, move your stuff off of our right-of-way, or else you're going to have twenty-five hundred dollars added to your, to your bit, like tax bill. I'm gonna get out there and move it.
There's so much difference in between the one car or a quarter mile of it. Maybe there would be a minimum that if we have to do it, there would be that flat fees. Just for.
I see, I worry about. You know, i- if you were to ask the county folks if they even wanna get involved in that, I honestly would say, they would probably say.
Oh, I don't think it would.
I don't wants to get involved in that because, I mean, at this location, we're talking twenty cars and they're down in a.
Well, that's a nuisance. That's on their.
Some of them are in a ravine, but what I'm saying is you, in some cases, you don't have room to move the items to some other location on the property. Then you're talking about finding a place, you know, in the county to move it and store it until, you see, that's, that's the, that's the concern I have. Is that if we get involved in moving these items. I just think we're opening a can of worms with that. I, I would. I would like to know more about the, the, you know, the civil injunction and how that works.
If there are other counties that are, when, when you said there are other counties doing this, were you talking about removal of items from the right-of-way?
Yes, sir. No, separate. I'm only talking right, road right-of-way. That's what, that's the only thing.
That's what I was talking.
But even that could be huge. I mean, we've seen.
I love your perspective, cause I agree with you. I, we don't wanna put our people in harm's way either of touching other people's stuff, like.
Right, yeah. Well, the, the, the civil injunction route would work really the same way in both. The Kansas Supreme Court has ruled that at least in the nuisance um arena. Cities have the authority to adopt statute or adopt ordinances that allow them to remediate a problem and charge back the cost to the landowner. The Kansas Supreme Court has ruled that almost none of that option. Um and it's a difference between statutory home rule and uh, and, and cities having uh constitutional home rule. But with regard to items in the right-of-way, uh filing the, the civil. A, a civil injunction case, seeking an injunction. If the person moves it, obviously then the case becomes moot and then our case gets dismissed and that's fine. Cause the goal is always compliance. Uh but if there's not compliance, after a sufficient amount of time, the court would order as a remedy. Um to give authority to the, the county to do a removal and to charge back the cost of that to the landowner. But the landowner is going to know ahead of time. These are your two options. You can do it yourself or they're gonna do it at their, at your cost. We, I, I don't have any experience, any way of knowing whether we're, what we would be charging will be less than what it would cost them to hire a contractor. And of course, these are all going to be very fact-specific. And I think we could do the same thing when we're talking about nuisance cases, although we, we haven't had to come to that in the previous nuisance case. I think we filed two of them, so we don't have a tremendous amount of experience with them, but we got compliance. Uh so. I mean theoretically, the court would have the same options. I don't know about both of them, but the one that I do know of was a big mess. I mean, it was a huge, I don't know about the, I know there was one on Bell, uh on Country Club. Yes. Close to the same area that, that these photos are from, but not the same owner, but, and it was a really big mess and it's, we got cleaned up as well. So I don't know. It sounds like, it sounds like this, uh if it plays out and goes beyond a, a, a time limit. Then it turns into what you were talking about. It, it, it ends up turning into the county eventually have to make a decision to do, to remove it. So it, it, it does get to that point uh at some point, but um so just out of curiosity, there's a, there's a. So a letter stating that you have X amount of days would be the proper, we would start with initial way to go, okay? For sure, always. Always giving a warning and uh. The explanation of what the next steps are going to be.
And, and I like, you know, I like the one-on-one. I get that. I, I think it's, it's worth, I think it's worth trying if, if. But I, I don't know that it's necessary every time. I mean, I think if the letter's worded correctly, it's not, you're not. I don't, it's, I'm sure, let, let me just say, I think most of these folks that have these. Collections, let's just put it that way. They've already heard from somebody. I mean, my guess is they have heard complaints. They're aware of their situation, but they just haven't, you know, had any reason to, to pick it up. You know, they've, they've not been coached to, to, to do it. You know, the county has not intervened to have them actually move the items. But I'm sure local, I mean, neighbors and landowners that have gone by these piles that we've seen have. But I'm sure they know.
Well, and that's why I think, I mean, every case is gonna be unique, right? Like, I, you know, I have one that might have four tires thrown out there, right? That, okay, move those, or two hay bales and then the quarter mile, right? Then we know of those, like, so each one's gonna be different. And sometimes I feel like, just, hey, a- and even another one that built some fence, didn't even realize, right? The, the right-of-way. And so it's like, sometimes the education starts with, hey, I just wanna make you aware. Oh, gosh, I'll get it, I'll get it moved. You know, I just put my hay bales there for, for a little bit, but when we don't see it being corrected. We gotta, we gotta have a conversation and maybe that comes back to, you know, in our meeting, the addresses are like, okay. Pat, I need you to send a letter because this address and this address have been notified on this date and this date and there's no remedy. Can you go ahead and send a letter? Like, I, I don't know what that process looks like, but I think we should dive into it later uh in more discussion.
I do too.
I like the letter. I think it's, if you've got a half mile of, you know. Collections that are not where they should be or they're out of compliance, they're additions. I think it's beyond that. I think if you, if you contact, you contact a person, I think it's. It's not, it's not really official. I mean, it's not, it's not a letter.
Yep.
So I, I think, anyway. That was, tha- that's a good conversation. I thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
We'll come up with what that looks like, yes. Um Mr. Tut, we have executive director from Moken Regional Council. Um with a memorandum of, of agreement on safe streets for all safety action plan.
Right, Ty.
Hi, welcome.
Been a while. So, yeah, I'm Trevor Tut with Moken Regional Council. Um we do transportation planning on the Missouri side. Uh it's a agreement that we have with MoDOT where they fund us to do transportation planning in our four counties in Missouri. Um recently, I don't know how familiar you are with the Safe Streets for All program, um but it's a uh federal highway grant. That allows um for planning funding and for uh implementation funding to do some, some infrastructure improvements. For roadway safety. So there's two grants that are identified. That first grant we received. So Moken received a planning grant uh last year to do a safety action plan for the Moken region. Uh or initially, we had only applied for Andrew County. Uh I don't know how familiar you are with the Saint Joseph MPO. Uh but their boundaries kind of overlap our boundaries, so we really only do transportation planning out in the rural areas of, of the Missouri side. And, and anything we can do in Kansas, we can try to help out there. Uh but because of that overlap, the MPO also received this planning grant. So they were doing a plan in most of Andrew County, so we didn't wanna charge Andrew County to do uh just a plan for their rural area. So we received permission to expand our scope to do the entire Moken area. Uh so we received a hundred thousand dollars. It's an eighty, twenty dollar, eighty, twenty uh percent match. So we, we already have that grant to do the action plan for our entire area. Um in order to help us cover that match, I'm going to each of the counties and hopefully to split that twenty thousand evenly amongst everybody. And then with that would gain you access to this plan. So we would have our transportation planner come out. Uh form committees locally, uh get local stakeholders to tell us what your safety concerns are. Uh we've already got contacts with KDOT to, to get safety data, so we can analyze the data and come up with projects, identify projects that would improve safety in the area. Um so we already did one for uh the city of Gower. I did that last year. Um. So we, for them specifically, we looked at in elementary schools right along a state highway. Uh they had concerns with the crosswalk there. So we evaluated the crosswalk, evaluated safety concerns across the city, came up with about five different projects that could be funded. As soon as a project's identified in that plan that we'll pass by the end of next year, then that makes it eligible for the implementation funding through safe streets. So those implementation funds are up to twenty-five million dollars worth of infrastructure improvements. So if we identify a project, say you have a high crash area that you wanna look at and fix, if you wanna add like a turn lane or something like that. And it's something that's not cost-effective through KDOT or through work that you guys do, we can put that into this plan and then it would make it eligible for federal highway grants in the future.
Um, yes. How does this translate into gravel roads, rural roads? This sounds more like uh steady planning, safe streets.
Yep.
Uh you know, crosswalks, that type of thing. So uh I, I just, how's the crossover go to rock roads?
Rock roads, I don't know. That is a question that's been, been brought up. Um that's something I can definitely look into and, and find out. But if you're looking at outside of, of Atchison itself, if you're looking for any other smaller towns that have safety concerns that aren't being addressed currently, those are things that we can touch. Um and it's also looking at bike pad routes or anything like that. We can do any sort of safety concerns. It doesn't have to just be crashes. So if there's uh something that would improve traffic flow, something that would improve pedestrian safety, sidewalk projects, crosswalks. Like I said, we looked at an overpass or an underpass uh for the highway as part of this. So there, there's lots of different options that we can look into. In terms of gravel again, I don't, I don't know specific answer to that.
So originally you said this has to deal with just high, just federal highways. Is that what you?
It doesn't have to. It's, it's a grant from Federal Highway, but it's to improve safety in the area. So we'll identify safety concerns.
Literally.
Mm-hmm.
Anywhere.
As far as I know.
Little, okay.
Have you approached the city of Atchison?
We haven't, we haven't gone city level, so my original ask is to go to the counties and try to make it even, even and easier to go to each county and ask you guys specifically to cover the entire area. Um if that doesn't work out, then yeah, that's the next step is to go directly to every single town and try to get everyone to sign on together. Um currently Donovan County has agreed to it and I've spoken to each of our Missouri counties to, to get them on board as well, but.
What counties?
Donovan, Buchanan, Andrew.
Correct. Andrew, Clinton, Buchanan and D-Cab in Missouri and then Atchison and Donovan are our counties in Kansas.
I think that's all in that email that we got. I believe I saw that in there.
Correct. So that's, that's everything that Moken services. Uh we do grant writing for any, any project in, in our counties, so. There's any other projects that you're interested in, feel free to reach me, reach out to me and.
Okay.
And help us.
So who prioritized the planning? So like if you get Donovan, Donovan and Atchison would be your Kansas counties.
Right.
And Buchanan, Clinton, D-Cab and Andrew, you said? So you have four Missouri counties.
Yep.
And when you originally spoke about it, you said the Moken planning received a hundred thousand with the eighty, twenty match. So.
So all of our counties will be covered in this plan. Is, is the, is the goal is to do a safety action plan for all of Moken.
Okay.
Um a majority of the Missouri uh RPCs received this uh funding, so they're trying, you know, the, the Safe Street Program's trying to get a safety action plan across the whole United States, right? Uh identify where those safety concerns are so that they can see where they should be spending their money. Um so this would help get those projects into a plan and then make it eligible for future funding as it comes along.
Can you give us an idea of what some of these projects are? The amount, dollar amount for some of these projects?
Yeah, so safety, so, so some of the planning that we do on the Missouri side, um specifically Highway fifty-nine goes, you know, Atchison to Buchanan. With that flood several years ago, whenever I first started, I was a transportation planner at Moken in twenty twenty. Uh so that was just after the flood. We've been trying to find money for that for years um to do uh some fu- flood mitigation, putting some culvers underneath it uh to raise that up. This is specifically something I'd like to put into the plan uh so that we could make it eligible for that federal funding. I think it's last estimate, I looked at. Six million dollars for that project to do it and MoDOT won't touch it. So if there's anything we can do to try to offset that, that's what we're, what we're trying to do. Um on the Missouri side, we, we do this prioritization once a year um for their state transportation improvement plan. Uh so we, we do the planning there, identify where those needs are, come up with the cost for it uh, and then that goes up through a system. But often higher cost products tend to get on the low end of that uh plan, so they won't be implemented for like ten to twenty years. So this is a, a way to offset that list, get some of those projects off of that list.
Is there a set of parameters or, or metrics that they, you know, wording and verbiage that they like to see? What, what are we talking about? So what are some of the things that they gravitate towards when they write these?
I mean, we, we do a detailed, exactly. Yeah, we do a detailed safety analysis, so we check the crash rates. Um any area that has high volume crashes that they'll net, they'll gravitate towards those projects. Um fatalities obviously is always a, a big one. The, the goal of the plan is to set a goal of either significant reduction of crashes. Or a goal of zero fatalities by a certain date. That's usually what we, we try to do, say in ten years, we'll, we'll reach zero fatalities now. Op- optimistic goal, but it's something that we can work towards. Um and then having the plan in place, we'll update that every five to ten years. Uh just to track where we're going and, and see if any of that's had an impact or not.
So does. If you identify an, an area, and I'll just say the, the flood plane that you was talking about. So far, MoDOT won't touch it.
Right.
But will they reconsider it after they've been approached from grant money coming in?
I would say so. We, we often see that where we get like earmarks from the governor or something like that, that helps offset that cost. Once they see that uh assistance coming in, then, then they're more, more willing to put up the fifty, fifty match if they do a, a cost share.
I mean, the only thing I can really think of right off the top of my head is the interchange at one sixteen West of Cummings. Remember, we talked with them there, but I don't think there'll ever be anything. No progress there because it's not, I don't know, attractive.
Right.
Uh, uh project, but you know, I was just thinking of something like that.
There's like traffic counts and things like that that go into their determinations as well.
Strange uh intersection where it's uh, and I think there have been crashes.
One sixteen of coming.
Yeah, there's kind of two of them.
Um, I have a question about the safety action plan for, for our county. So um. The investment costs you're looking at if each county. Comes on board would be about thirty-four hundred bucks.
Yep.
Um thirty-four hundred bucks would then get us a safety action plan county-wide.
Mm-hmm. It would be Moken-wide, but yes, your, your county would be included in the Moken plan.
Our entire county would have the plan.
Correct.
Cause I'm just trying to understand, because when we go for grants um on our current needs. All of these things we're talking about, safety analysis and traffic counts and data, that's all already being done, like to submit for that grant. So I'm just um trying to understand that because I feel like it's gonna be a further discussion for us to have with our cities, right? Of like what that looks like and if it's a benefit for us to sign up on this for all of us, right? For all of our cities that, that we have in our county as well. So just trying to understand.
Yeah.
So it'd be a safety action plan for our entire county.
Correct.
Not a specific location.
Rule.
Yeah.
Okay, so all the cities are included.
Yeah, any project that would be identified in this plan, if we, if we meet with your constituents, get it, get it into the plan, gets the data, get a project together. If it's in that plan, it'll be eligible for that federal money.
And what's the timeline of commitment? You said you had Donovan is only yes right now?
Correct. I'd like to know by the end of the week, so I know if I need to go to the towns and ask for them instead.
What's your timeline though? Like that you have to have your match?
I, it doesn't really matter. Uh a, a few of them have already, you know, finalized their budgets and, and so it might be next year by the time I actually get those commitments. But I'd like to get a commitment in place to know that I can start working on it.
So even if the commitment's twenty twenty-six, that's still viable.
As long as you get, you signing the memorandum of agreement anytime that you wanted to pay after that, I would be okay with. It's just knowing that you're on board to, to join us so that we can offset that. Cause the twenty thousand match, we're not gonna build you on our own, but.
Or if it would be worth bringing uh. Let's see, Joe.
He's on vacation this weekend.
See, that's, that would be a good. See, that's, that would be a good, the road and bridge guy, cause he's all over the county, you know? And he would, uh, he would be a good guy.
And we definitely want him like on the planning committee if, whenever we get people. Out here to the community and make sure we identify what your needs are and what you're seeing.
Can I ask you another question? Just because I'm trying to understand, cause we're getting better at going after grants and all the things and. Is this usually standard practice for your council to go after grants that you don't have matching funds for and then figure it out on the back end?
No, not usually. Um, again, the original grant application we put in was just for one county, and so they were. The ones putting the twenty thousand upfront, um. Because we wanted to expand it and, and include all of our region, we wanna go ahead and ask you guys instead rather than.
Too, right? Of like, we wanna go after this, but we didn't budget for that match. How do we, you know?
It would have been in place whenever we did the application, had we gone for everybody.
Got it.
And your thought is there's enough in this fund? That you could reach out to the, the region versus, okay.
Okay, so if we're the recipient of a grant, then what are we? Or is there still eighty-twenty?
I believe so. It's a federal grant and most of those are eighty-twenty. And so yeah, twenty percent match on a.
So.
Twenty-five million dollar project's pretty steep, but you would then have other options of offsetting it if, if there was some way for KDOT or, or somebody to come in and help with the. With the match.
Yeah, I'm more like thinking if you're, so if you're putting in twenty thousand and you get a. Five hundred thousand dollar return or even, you, you know, you're in pretty good shape. And so if, if it's a project that say Joe has on the back of his, in the back of his mind, that. To me, it's a, that's a.
Well.
That's a win-win there.
Even, I have a couple of areas of collaboration with the city where we had joined there. That's been some discussions in the past. So I think we, we can do some of that. You had some questions for him?
Well, I think just funding. I think if the board decides to go this route, the board also needs to be. Progressing forward of actually going to spend money on a project. I mean, hate for you to fund it on the front end and then it fail later.
But yeah, there would be no point in, that's what committing, committing if we didn't have funds on the back end, yeah.
Something that would possibly be identified that would qualify, but we wouldn't have the match. I mean, we, you know, cause it's, and our budget's cooked for twenty-twenty-five, so.
And that's why I'd like Joe's. Uh, input on this because he, he knows his budget and he knows what, you know? So this could open up. Some ideas for him.
I have another question for you, because the name of this rings a bell for me.
We've already done this.
Yeah, so that's why I was wondering, so would your application be competing with the direct ones from?
If you already have a safety action plan in place, we had that with Donovan too. So Donovan put one together and they were gonna do a safe streets grant. I think federal highway told them, because it was only one county, they probably wouldn't get awarded the planning grant, but they already have a safety action plan in place. In my mind, we just roll those plans into ours and then we have one that federal highway will recognize and, and utilize. So. If the city already has one or something like that, we just work off of that, keep it updated and. Put it all together in MoCan.
Yeah, cause that's, that's our struggle that we ran into. We have this beautiful safety action plan from twenty-twenty-one, so it's a little older.
Right.
It has traffic counts, it has deaths, it has accidents, it has all of it. We applied to KDOT. We didn't have the, the match funding at the time. I mean, we needed ten percent of a two million dollar. Project, just one road segment. And this is a fifteen-page document of every road segment that has deaths and high traffic count. So. We didn't have the funds to commit, um, at the time and. I don't know what has changed.
I think, I think Gower had the same thing where they, they had put a safety action plan together, took, taken it to federal highway, say. Would one of these projects we've identified? Count and they said, well, that safety action plan doesn't meet X, Y, Z or criteria. So us rolling this into that, we essentially just updated their plan into a, a method that fit federal highways requirements and then that made them eligible. So.
Yeah, so I think we should probably have some more discussions with Joe and the city and, and different folks to see, you know, is this a viable? Something we all.
Commitment.
Yeah, end of the week's not happening.
Yeah, May Tuesday, so it would definitely be, it would have to be, you know, earlier.
Well, and Joe's on vacation this week and we need to get him. Yeah. But we know time is of essence, so we'll get our ducks in a row and get you an answer one way or another. I mean, after we do our due diligence, I feel like.
Our original timeline is to have the plan actually drafted and done by the end of the year. So then you'll be eligible for those implementation funding. I think in March is whenever the November comes out for. For federal highway, so those safe street grants will start going in, in March. So hopefully we get some projects together by the end of the year that would be eligible for that next round.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for them, Owen, reaching out to us. We appreciate you.
And don't forget, we do have the, uh, CDBG training is in Highland next week. If you guys are interested in joining us.
I hope you don't mind. I sent it to my, the boards that I'm on, D-Cab and, and agency on AG, just so they have an idea what's out there.
We're excited to see some books, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next we have Mark Zeltner, Finance Director. We have a journal entry, consideration of approval on countywide sales tax. On eight ninety-seven consolidate with reserve fund two fifty, county lake one pager, information update, and then K-Camp claim.
Yeah, um, the more I think about the K-Camp claim, that should probably be an attorney client.
Okay.
The attorney client. Five or ten minutes. Um, I don't think, I wasn't gonna use any names or specifications in it in open session, but, um, I think the.
Yeah, I agree.
Precedent is.
Okay, perfect. So we'll do attorney client at the end of this for ten minutes.
Okay. Um, so the first thing is the journal entry, um. And this is just to think about or discuss. I have, um, it ready to go if you guys want to do it, but. Uh, it is to combine the countywide sales tax fund eight ninety-seven to the reserve fund. So. To me, it's a little easier to keep track of. When we say reserve fund, it's all one. Um, it's about two hundred and thirteen thousand in the countywide sales tax.
I want to state for our viewers that this is pre-three-quarters set sales tax. This is not the dedicated sales tax that we just passed and started, so.
That's good. And also to clarify that by statute, it is. Able to be rolled into that fund based on all the expenses being paid. So yes.
Yeah.
And Pat, your language would be better than, than mine on that, but, um, we've clarified with the county counselor that this is applicable to be.
These funds, yes.
I, yes, I wholeheartedly agree.
I could just see the, uh, the overarching, uh, not clarifying.
Yeah, thank you, Eric.
Uh, so just by, if we did this and you all three approved it. You wouldn't have to remember what was in eight ninety-seven, what was in reserve. We could just say one total and move forward. If you wanna keep it separate, that's fine. Um, that's, that's fine. Uh, we always will have. The paper trail of knowing how much was in eight ninety-seven, that's two hundred and thirteen number. It'll always be there for reporting. If you wanted to go back prior to today. Let's see how much was moved. Um, like it's just in part of history report. So I didn't know if that's something you wanted to do. I've signed it and already kinda have it worked up here. This needs to be approved.
Um, I, I also wondered if we've got the eight ninety-seven and then the new one is the nine ninety-seven. In future that it would be maybe confused when we have. Take up or whatever and it would be deposited. We've had that before in the past where an old account was. Oh, well, that's our sa- uh, our sales tax money. They start putting the new, the nine ninety-seven money and that, then it would be, uh. So if, if it was done away with, then you would only have one sales tax fund.
Yeah, I like that. I think that's a good practice. Um, that we should look at doing once we. If, if we do this motion. So I'd look for a motion to approve the Atchison County transfer as presented by our finance director. To consolidate the eight ninety-seven countywide sales tax fund into a reserve fund two fifty, um, with. The reserve fund current balance at two hundred and thirteen thousand nine sixty-one eighty-six. And that will put our reserve balance of our cash reserve at five hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and thirty cents as of. March fourth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve?
So. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
So, uh, the next thing is the county lake little one pager. I took the. Um, advice and corrections that you guys had from last time and kind of just reworked it a little bit. Um, anything can be changed and it's not color, but it, this is the color version of what it would kinda look like. So. Um, online, um, it looks nicer. Uh, but it. It, it needs a little reformatting, the little banners kinda cut off and stuff, but this price could be redone to whatever the, the. Price would be, um, I'm still waiting for. The estimate for the tax revenue of how much that would be put back on adware taxes once a new owner would secure it. Um, I don't have that information yet, so I'm, I'm waiting on that. I'm trying to figure out the insurance cost, uh, per year. It currently through K-Camp, it's listed, um, as part of the road and bridge bucket. So out of the road and bridge bucket, I, I don't know. So they're, I'm working with K-Camp to try to figure that out. I would think that the property would be listed separately at that address on three twenty-sixth road. But it's not. It's just grouped under land with road and bridge. So, uh, it's tough. But I'll work that out and I kind of just put a placeholder spot in there for that. Um, and then over to the right-hand side was about. A little verbiage about what the, the plan was with the sale proceeds. Um, you guys had kinda wanted a, a plan.
Yeah.
So, um, we can change that however you wanna see fit, but I'm just letting you know it's, I'm trying to keep it going for you, so.
Yeah, it's a, like I, we're getting there. It's getting a lot. When we get those projected tax numbers will be beautiful. Uh, the total acreage when we add that on there, um. I think this is, thank you for keeping this as the forefront, cause.
I just don't know what else, like down at the bottom, it's got additional information. I don't know what to put down here, so.
I think like the acreage would definitely be, um. I wouldn't put it how big a lake it is because I don't know.
That really would attract.
He keeps saying a sixty acre, a lake, but it's not a sixty acre lake. It's what, fifteen?
I have no idea.
I, you know, it's, but I guess it sounds good for advertisement, but.
You're saying because of the group, the, the. The areas that are grown in.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't.
Well, I don't know if.
See the.
The purpose of this for the public, I don't know if they would.
They kinda know what it is.
They wanna know why.
Yeah.
Why, why are you making this?
What do you wanna do with it and what, how's it gonna help?
I don't know if you'd list like two shelter houses or three shelter houses and just. That's really, I wouldn't even.
Cause it's not like you wanna hand this to a, a buyer, you know, that's what he's gonna do.
Just for the public.
Yeah. I think just keeping, keeping the focal point on. Yeah, why? This is gonna add it back, back to the tax role, generate, um, extra adware dollars that will spread across the entire pot.
Yeah, we're getting there for sure.
Okay, we've got insurance costs per year, but you know, we used to. There's a s- separate budget for mowing and everything else.
Yeah, and that's, that's down, um, that, that next section under there. That's how much.
Okay, yeah, I was, I saw the word adware and was thinking that was projected taxes on it. So that's the reason I, that, you know.
Yeah, I can.
What we would have gotten in tax money if it would have been private.
Yeah, and she's getting that for us.
Yeah.
So when you get that and then the insurance costs, then we can pretty much. Wrap it up and say, you know, let's make a, a. Position or motion at that moment to approve it and then we can start blasting it out and website, social media, letting people know like, hey, this is what we're thinking.
It's on, on our end. And Roger, I don't know if Roger's listening.
Yes.
The plat- plating the roads, we, we need to get going on that. So that's something that we need to discuss with. Roger, I said, if we're gonna.
Or we may have to hire that done too.
Yeah, I think Joe was checking with the engineer on the plating.
Okay, he, I didn't know if he mentioned Roger in that, that.
I think I brought up his.
Maybe he could do on his end. I don't know.
I don't know what that looks like from a liability standpoint, if our own staff internally or, you know what I mean? Or if it's better to plat with a third party that stamps off and says, here's what, here's what we got, especially when we're selling it, right?
Yeah, I, I don't think the liability part's the issue. The issue is licensure.
Okay.
For doing it, by the state requirements, but Roger will, I'm sure.
Is he licensed to do it?
No.
Okay, so.
But he's definitely competent to do it though, but he's not licensed.
Okay, so we'll.
Well, you know, like, he, I, maybe he is.
He what? He has joined the meeting, but I don't know.
We need to pop into executive session if we're gonna stay on track like the new executive session. Attorney client, ten minutes.
And just. Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session at, um, what time is it?
Eleven forty-six.
Eleven forty-six AM. For consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. As allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session in ten minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be, uh, the three commissioners, uh, county counselor and finance director.
I will second, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Back in session, we're waiting on Commissioner Quinn. Restrooms.
And so now we have an executive session, twenty minutes, non-elected.
Uh, this is where we. Okay, this is still executive session.
Yeah, non-elected personnel. Um, was it? Twenty, thirty?
Twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes, yes.
And.
Um, HR. Um, solid waste director, commissioners and county counselor.
No findings?
No.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session at. Eleven.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash. Four-three-one-nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in twenty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be three commissioners, HR, solid waste director and county counselor.
Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Yeah.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, so we are back in open session. Uh, we have Stacy at Solid Waste, um, and just. Coming out of executive session to discuss, um, a public date of April eighth. You're stating you wanna be on agenda for solid waste management plan acceptance?
Yes.
Is there a solid waste committee meeting scheduled?
Not scheduled yet, but I'm, I wanna get the. Plan complete before I schedule that. But yes, we'll have a solid waste, our solid waste.
So and the committee meeting must be before April eighth, correct?
It will be. It doesn't have to be, but it, it will be, yes.
Can you try to work on getting that date secured this week?
Yeah, I'm gonna. I was gonna get with her today.
Cause I'm the committee person, I think still, right? Um, solid waste, yeah. So, um, we switched up a little bit this year, but I'm still on that. So I just wanna get that date in my calendar, so I'm sure I can make it.
Yep, sounds good.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so. Let's tackle these last few unfinished business items if we're good with that, and then we'll do the last executive session. Is that okay for your timing? There's just a few, just wanna knock them out. So. The nuisance property. Process discussion, um, I put on there too, because. In my brain, although they are similar in the fact that usually typically, when you have a nuisance property. It's encroaching on the roadway, right? So it's kinda that, but they're two different. It's encroaching on the roadway, right? So it's kind of that, but they're two different separate things in my mind.
Right.
Of understanding that and with new commissioners, um. And resolutions from before any of the three of us.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to talk about that of understanding kind of where your head's at, because I get. Uncomfortable um, with not knowing, right? Like. How did these properties get on my list, right? And, and the public asks you that, like if you have somebody on your list, how'd I get on that list? Well, I don't know. And that's what, you know, historically, when the lists are made before us and sitting in the seats, you want to know like why. Um, and also when we took our road and bridge tour last week, like it was brought up by someone like. Oh, we don't have that one on the list, you know, and I don't think we want to really, I don't know, I don't, I don't. Want to get into the business of feeling like we're driving around and targeting people, right? Because at the end of the day.
There's some police.
Yeah, and let, let's be honest, at the end of the day, from the east to the west of Asheson County, that list could be a, um.
Pretty long.
Pretty long. And so just understanding. Uh, our process, right? Like if you're getting on the list because. Someone came forward as your, you know, like, let's use this next Bellevue Drive, perfect example. They have no shame to know this is a problem for me. And they've communicated that to the commission, right? And when we look at it and we see cars filling a creek, that's a problem, right? Like. So, so is that going to be the process of like how they get on the list is? A constituent has a concern and it approaches the commission. To me, that.
What about anonymous though?
Well, it's same thing though, right? But that feels like a good process. It's not us driving around the county and policing anybody. It's this constituent brought it to our attention that this is happening and then we have to look at the case by case basis, what that looks like, right? Uh, do you guys feel that or how do you?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think though we need to discuss, because NEK was just here last meeting and they addressed some of this. So are we partnering with them to do that? And if so, are, do, we need to make sure that they're on board with exactly what we're gonna do. The, you know, the idea that we would do a, uh, civil. Injunction with, you know, the way you were discussing Eric, uh, following, uh, no action from the, you know. From the person with the, with the nuisance. Then the county would have to take.
I think there is, well, I think I was specifically talking about was on the right of way. So. I don't know, does a civil injunction incorporate, could that be included into the nuisance areas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. In fact, that's where, that's where it started from.
Okay, I, I, I just want to make sure, because there's two different issues we're talking about, which are similar, but I want to make sure.
But what you do then, and you correct me if I'm wrong, uh, that when you send a letter out, it's just a difference of. You know, resolution versus the statute, you know, if it's, if it's a. If it's a right of way, then you, that's how you state it. It's a right of way in accordance with statute. If it's a nuisance, then you write it in accordance with resolution such and such. So, so the letter goes out and it specifies, and then after that. We should probably have a similar timeframe, I would think, the timeframe. Before the county, you know. Takes further steps.
I like this. So if we do an injunction, we just need to update the verbiage on our resolutions, correct?
I don't think you're required to. I don't think we have to change the resolution. It's, you're, you're not using, essentially you're not using the resolution. The enforcement mechanism that's in the resolution that you're using enforcement mechanism that's set by state statute.
So I guess if you guys would be okay with it, I'd love to have a, some type of a. Focus timeline, like let's give ourselves some time to work through that, um. So that we can move forward. Um, and to your point, I like your perspective of like. Let's just do the letter, okay? And as long as we are in. The understanding of when the letter's going and who's sending the letter, we can still be courteous, right? To have the phone call and say, hey, just FYI, you got stuff in the right of way, you're going to be getting a letter, get it out. Because at the end of the day, the goal is to clear our right of ways.
Mm-hmm.
And we can do it as a team in a, in a. Positive manner, right? Of like still being courteous, still doing the phone call, but knowing. Here's the timeline and it started and it, it kind of, I think that's, I like that. I think, I think we're getting there. And treating them separately, a right of way separate from the nuisance. And knowing that how, when someone asks me, how did I get on the nuisance? Then there's a reason. Well, we, we got a form on October sixteenth. And there's concern that there's cars in a creek, you know, like. It's, it's easy. It's a conversation, but I think the, the unknowns make it uncomfortable. Like, I don't know how you got on there. You know, and it's, I know commissions are going to change, but I think if we all get on that same wavelength of communication together. It doesn't matter who's sitting here, Martha or you or someone is going to have documentation and be able to show. Like this is, this is where we're at.
So are you familiar with, with the letter, the form letter they're sending out, NEK? Or have you seen any of that? Is it a standard letter? I, I've seen letters that they've sent in the past, yes. I don't, I don't particularly remember them, but. Because on this, on this email, she says, hoping to get the letter out today. And this was, this was sent this morning. So do we want her to? Send, go ahead and send that, or do we want her to, to say no that we're gonna? Well, we're going a different route, because they, in the past, we've given them. The okay to do that.
I don't think it would change anything about the letter, but I think I should probably talk to her this afternoon after a meeting. I can call.
Okay.
But don't you think coming from the Board of County Commission, um, drafted by our county counselor? Especially with the injunction discussion, that should come from us, right?
Yeah.
And like, and also not pepper that constituent with a NEK, yes, and us, but if we all stay in conformance, right? And even be able to let Martha know, like, we are sending the letters. Like she does the due diligence of going out and giving us the investigative report. She sends us the pictures, but should the letter come from the county?
Probably, but uh, it's, it's, when it comes from her, it is coming from the county. I mean. Cause we, we, we've empowered them to do it, so, right? I mean, um.
Yeah, that's true.
Of course, and I. Maybe if we would get. CC'd on all of those letters, then we could do the same thing. Cause a lot of times, uh, I found out after the fact that letters went out.
And that's where it gets crazy.
And I think that's where you want to do the courtesy phone call. We'd like the opportunity, so.
Here's a copy of the, a letter example from NEK, so you guys can see it.
Oh, good, you got it.
Yep, I have one. This one's from twenty twenty-two, but it, it's, it's the same form letters, like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so. Did you want to, I mean, I just put the seventeen Bellevue because we talked about that on. Do we want to schedule? Time to review this and, and determine a process then? Okay.
Um, I kind of wanted, well. Let me read this real quick, because I really kind of wanted to get this one out. Could we go ahead and just?
Now let me ask this question, Pat, real quick while they're reading. Martha would be utilized for nuisance only. Right away would be us and Joe. Road right away.
Well, the sheriff would have authority too. So he doesn't necessarily have to be involved, but could be.
Okay. Perfect. I just, I like that they're separate and they're. Two different.
Okay, so this, this is good, because it, 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 it has Kansas State statute in here and it has the.
Resolution.
Local resolution. Ashton County, you know, corporate cities in this county have. Research plant and develop, see it, it.
And it actually, I didn't realize, but it CC'd us and the sheriff and the county counselor on it.
Yeah. So I, I'll tell you. I think they, they comply with just about everything we're talking about, um. And it's, it's, I like the verbiage at the bottom, that last paragraph, look at that. That's.
We want to work with you.
See, I, I, I don't know that we would change anything on this, on this. This format.
Other than just to Eric's point, being involved in knowing the letters going out. Like, we really do need that heads up.
They need to CCS on it also.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, okay.
And then that allows us, just like we did with these, is drive by, see what our thoughts are and we can be prepared to have the discussion.
So one of us can. I can reply back to Martha and say, hey, please. You know, CCS.
Okay.
Uh, before you send it and then if, if you get in with. Response.
So is Bellevue Drive your district or Eric's? I couldn't remember.
Mine.
Okay. So.
I'm sure Bellevue Drive is mine.
All right, well, it's. I'm.
So are you gonna have Martha send a letter on that one then, after the pictures that were given to us and?
Well, she's, if you don't say anything, she's doing, she, she already said she was.
She's already doing it.
She's trying to get it out today.
Is also, is she gonna CCS in? Just have her.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that. I'll send her a reply and tell her to CC this.
Okay. Okay, so. I like that process. So to be clear, Martha or Northeast Kansas Environmental will be sending letters. To nuisance. That we bring to them that are brought to us by other constituents.
Well, she does look, find some of those herself.
Or when she drives around.
So she might be self-reported, I guess you would say.
Okay. And then she'll just make sure and CCS in, so we're aware, and then we can have those conversations as we see fit. The road right away will be separate where Roden Bridge lets us know of it and we work with Pat to get a letter out on that.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I feel, I like that. Thank you. Having that process. And then once the process. Works, if we need to put a policy together or something would be helpful, I think, for commissions in the future of. Kind of what we've done in the past, just so we have it. Um, then next was the two thirtieth, um, road, and I know Commissioner Campbell sent us photos and went out there. Um, I think we should issue the address on that one. Um, I know that the floodplain map and. Shows that it's in here, um, but there's an electric, yep, go ahead, electric meter, um, thank you, water. Um, Martha said there's been a license permitted system on there. There's a propane tank. Um, so I think it's a mapping issue. Um. On that. And I also talked to constituents out there, which they hadn't had a flood outside of. And they've been there a lo, many years. So the creek runs here.
Mm-hmm.
And it comes out like of its boundaries a bit, like obviously when it's flood, but never to like down here.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Cause I know last week you were gonna send a letter saying they couldn't have an address and I just want to make sure that. Feel like they should have an address and be able to be put on the tax roll again. Um, after going by it and looking at that as a case by case. Situation.
He hadn't applied for an address. Has never filled out a permit of any kind.
He asked about it, right?
He got stopped by Martha because he put that thing back in in a manner that was considered to be unacceptable. And then he called me. And then in the phone call, and it was not a, a pleasant call. He blamed me for everything. So. I just, uh, I have not in any way, uh, we had the conversation that day. I was merely letting you know that I was gonna write him a letter. Uh, now, if we're not going to consider. The floodplanes that were adopted in two thousand fourteen and, and we're not going to use any of those, then I don't know how I can move forward with anything.
So I.
I probably need to.
Well, no, what we.
Recuse myself from.
Yeah, I, I, we were trying to discuss. Earlier, we were discussing how, how do you prevent these things? And uh. I think that's what we're still after is trying to figure it out. And you, you're not gonna, you're not gonna stop all of it. You just, because as we talked about. People sell property pieces without. You know, not doing it the proper way, so to speak. So you're not going to stop all of it. But in this case, and I'm going to ask Pat this question. Um, if, if because he had, he's got all the utilities hooked up, he's got the trailer sitting there. He's bought the property. Is it a case where we could, um. Go ahead and grant the address now and then sign, have him sign a piece of paper saying, listen, you're not, you're probably not going to get. Insurance and we don't want to be blamed for that, right? Cause, cause that's really what this is about, isn't it? Because if it's in a floodplain.
I, I would need to look at, at how it affects it. Uh, first of all, no, he would not get insurance. And, and the letter basically says, so, so let me ask you a question. So he puts a mobile home in there and the place does flood.
Mm-hmm.
And they get killed. And they come in here. Somebody comes in here and says, well, you guys said this was okay. I'm, I'm just asking the question. That's what this is for. It's to stop people from doing stupid things. Now, if it wasn't a residence, it'd be, in my opinion, it probably isn't going to get the same kind of consideration. But you're actually talking about somebody sleeping in an area that might be subject to floods. And I do know. Uh, those things don't always give you a lot of warning. Now, whether or not somebody says it's not, that's fine. I'm telling you, we didn't come up with these lines. These are not our lines. These were created by the Department of Agriculture. Through a FEMA grant that we didn't even apply for. They said it had been nineteen seventy-seven since our last one. They came in with the new work in, I believe, two thousand and twelve or thirteen. And we had to set up and do public hearings on these. Uh, they held a series of public hearings at the library. People showed up, they talked about them. Uh, Martha was there at those public hearings as well. And uh, they talked about the rules and regulations and how it would uh, pertain to this. And, and the county commission adopted these in two thousand fourteen. Uh, in those rules, and if you haven't got a copy of them, I'd be happy to send you one, but. Had, if, if it were non-conforming, that's one thing, but it's not non-conforming, because it disappeared. He bought the site vacant. And then he put this on it. It's just a difficult situation, but I don't know the rules for variance. I would have to uh, inquire. Cause usually what they try and do is get us not to have people in that floodplain. Uh.
Also, the septic system would be in a floodplain, which is not allowed.
That is correct.
And they didn't apply for a septic system. So if they're using the old one that was there, is it still in compliance? So I mean, we don't have any idea what's going on with the septic system.
No, we don't. And Martha said she wouldn't permit it today anyway. Uh, they've also got, uh, propane tanks they moved in there. And propane, propane tanks uh, have to be elevated above the floodplain and they have to be tied down because they have a tendency to float off. Uh, I, I don't know all the rules here. Fact is, I was gonna write him a letter and say, you haven't even so much as contacted us. You haven't asked for a permit. You haven't suggested you need an address. Uh, you've just moved it in, hooked all this stuff up and you're starting to live in it and. You need to get in touch with us and figure out where we can go from here. And, and he has not done anything else. He says it's just a vacation spot for him. He doesn't live there.
So I think that the floodmaps are um, intriguing to me. Do you feel like they're relevant to what we see in our county? I mean, you think, do you feel they're accurate and relevant when you look at them?
I think the vast majority of them are. I think if I look at it and I, you know, what I've listened to the engineers tell what. You know, they have hydraulic analysis, people who do a lot of this stuff. And if they use the proper information and they're dealing with the things correctly, then they are. I know cases where they maybe didn't consider a watershed dam or something like that. Those change things. Uh, but for the most part, uh, I think their hydraulic analysis are relatively accurate. Uh, now, they're talking a hundred year flood. So if somebody says, hey, I've lived here for sixty years and I've never seen it. Uh, now, they're talking a hundred year flood, so if somebody says, hey, I've lived here for sixty years and I've never seen it, that's fine. Every once in a while, something happens. And we didn't get to say where those lines were gonna go.
Right.
They say where those are. And so, uh, again, I, I can't argue with the lines, but I can tell you what we have to do to try and change.
I just, so from the county commissioner's standpoint, and looking at it from the view down, right, of all the discussions that we have on so many other things, right? We need to increase our tax base, we need to encourage development, you know, all the things, and then when you look at the maps and you see, um, and real quick, just so I understand, I'm looking at the correct maps, cause I know we have a map on our website um, that is under Atchison County, the ArcGIS, and then Kansas Current Effective Floodplain Viewer. Are those pulling from the same location, so like it's the same map, or did we generate ours, or where's the origin of the floodplain map on all?
Actually, the Kansas Viewer is probably more, it should be the same data.
Okay.
But, uh, if I were gonna tell you one is more accurate than the other, I, I'd certainly rely upon the Kansas, because we use ours as a, uh, shit file of the feature class. And so, yes, it's data that we've put out there, but we're using this as a slightly different viewer in which to deal with respect to, uh, the property boundaries.
Well, cause I was just looking, cause I, I like li- literally went from one side of the county to the other, li- you know, drilling down, and it's like, okay, half of our commerce area in the city of Atchison is sitting in floodplains, and, and so again, going back to, right, encouraging development, if they're going to develop in what a aerial map shows as a floodplain versus reality of a floodplain that, you know, that we see, I just, and again, if it's as long as it, we don't feel like it's going to, I guess I wanna encourage development, right? So if someone wants an address, like, okay, here's your address, and here's the information telling you you're in a floodplain, and so you might have problems getting water or propane, because all of those, all of those other entities, right, the water district, NEKES, um, gas companies, electric companies, they have their own set of rules, like, right? We're not telling them, oh, you can put power here, or you can put power, you know, they're making that, so I just don't think the address is where it should start.
He hasn't applied for one.
And in, in the ca- well, and I'm not saying this example, I'm just, he hasn't, I'm just saying in general, like, I just wanna have the discussion, because I was talking to other county commissioners in, um, at like my KCCA last year, and asking them how they handle it, and it was more of a like, hey, just, we wanna let you know, like, you're gonna run into, you're not gonna be able to get insurance, you might have to pay more for flood insurance, like, whatever it is, and be more of that, like, community partner of like, here's your address, versus like, okay, we're not gonna give you an address because you're in the floodplain, and now that we didn't give you an address, you can't get water and you can't get electric. Like, I, I think it's all in how we want to partner with our constituents, and also knowing from these floodmaps, like, there are so many businesses and residents already living in floodplains that, and that was a question to Martha last week, you know, if, if we're neighbors and we're both in the floodplain, but you've lived there for fifty years, I wanna put a house next to you, but I can't, like, are we worried about the environment? Because you have a septic or a lagoon already, right? And so I'm just, it's just the, trying to understand, it just doesn't make sense, I guess, to me of, of.
It's not about the environment. It is strictly about protecting, uh, life and property. And, and the situation of flood insurance, and, and first of all, I'm the first person to tell you that when the government takes over things, it always gets better. Uh, because in, in nineteen sixty-one, I believe it was, uh, FEMA took over as flood insurance. Uh, when they did, no one else can issue flood insurance. They have it all. And so in order to get it, you have to go through FEMA. Uh, their whole thing is FEMA's gotten to the point where they don't even fund, you pay insurance, but all the insurance goes toward administration, and every time they have a disaster, they wanna get more funds. There are senators and representatives out there who are fighting to try and make it an actuarial cost, because there are places like Florida that you've got places like Marco Island where all the properties on it are in the floodplain. And they're all getting replaced every six to eight years at the tune of a half a million dollars a time, and their flood insurance has cost them about six hundred dollars a mon- a year. Now, something tells me economically that doesn't make any sense. So they try as much as possible to save those properties. They don't want people developing in the floodplain, because if they do, just like we've seen it at Sugar Lake a number of times, the places flood out, they end up buying people out, and they end up building back in the same spots. Well, they've gotten to the point where they don't let them do that anymore, and it's kinda ruined Sugar Lake, hadn't it?
Yeah.
But you can't build back there. Uh, and, and they've got more than one reason for it now. Because, uh, number one, they say the property's at risk and they won't insure you, the other thing they say is it might affect somebody else's property if you build there. Uh, I, I don't know all those answers, I don't make all those answers. Uh, what I do know is, um, I've studied this stuff at length for years, and when I got the call from the state that said, you're the floodplain manager, I said, huh, news to me. But what I did do is I went to Wichita for a week to school to, uh, learn how to be a floodplain manager. And I've listened to a lot of what they have to say. Um, I can tell you from working with engineering for a long time, the hydraulic analysis work that they're doing, it's pretty consistent, it's industry standard, is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. But we don't wanna be in a position where we throw it out and then we try and just determine where we are every time for two reasons, number one, I don't think we have the authority to do that, number two, you are going to greatly increase your work if you're able to do that, and, and the third thing is I need to check and see whether we even can. I just don't know what our answer is there, and I will go, reach out to see, you know, does the county commission have a right to issue a variance? Issuing an address, uh, we issue addresses in the floodplain. That's not a, now, we do warn people, and we do not allow, uh, we pretty well say, you can't build a residence in the floodplain, because the law says you have to be one foot above the base flood elevation, build a house. And the base flood elevation has to be determined by a land surveyor or a professional engineer licensed with the state board of technical professions. That's the only two who are allowed to make that determination. If you are permitting others, you're assuming the liability if something goes wrong. I don't know that I'd wanna do that, because you're talking relatively few cases. Now, if we're talking downtown, the city of Atchison was dealing with this also at the time. Uh, they had problems with the fact that they probably did not adequately consider the flood retention dams that were constructed around the city. Um, a couple of those regions were, one, it was, they were constructed a long time ago, and the engineering that was on them was not all readily available. Regardless of that, I'm not gonna tell you that that is the case all over the county. Uh, but going forward, we deal with this, the reason we have a permit is because the state said, the state says we have to permit every improvement that occurs. If we don't permit it, how do we know when we didn't get the right one? And so we have to issue permits for everything, and, and you and I discussed that right after you came on as a commissioner.
Are we, uh, does that include the city, the cities' permits too?
The city permits on their own, they do their own thing.
Okay.
We don't do theirs.
So, but wouldn't the rules be the same as far as variances in the floodplain? Like if they wanna build something and it's in the floodplain, whether it's a commercial business, or how are they getting? How do they get?
They have to abide by the same rules we're abiding by.
Okay, so if, I'm just gonna use Pizza Hut, for example. Pizza Hut burns down and they wanna bu- build a new Pizza Hut back there, it's in a floodplain, what's the process to get that done?
They're either gonna have to elevate the site to get it out of the floodplain, or they're gonna have to in some manner floodproof it. There are a number of different issues that you would have to go through to get that done.
So there's ways.
There's almost always a way to get things done, a lot of times it's more expensive. But the intersection of, of Tenth and Skyway is one of those places where you just say, is this all correct? And, and I have to ask that same question. On the other hand, I don't have the authority by which to change any of that. Uh.
And for me, those are the things I'm looking, right?
Right.
Or Paradise Lake, like several of the structures in Paradise Lake are in that blue of the map, and so if something happened and their house burnt down and they wanted to rebuild, are we gonna tell them, no, you're in a floodplain when they've lived there, right? So again, it's just, it's just the conversations I wanna have and understand the process so that.
And under the current rules, what I would have to say is, if you wanna build back, if you wanna improve your structure and you're in the floodplain, then what you're gonna have to do is raise the, any living floor area to at least one foot above the base flood elevation. Now, most of those are in pretty good shape, I mean, they're not all in bad shape. We have some around where they say, well, we don't think these are right, and a surveyor can come in, survey, determine the base flood elevation, determine the elevation of their first floor, and then write them what is known as an elevation certificate. Now, there's a good side and a bad side to this, and, and, uh, the bad side is it restricts people. We, we issue permits now, nobody likes to get permits, right? On the other hand, before we did the permits, I will tell you if you had any floodplain on your property, you were considered in the floodplain. And in order to get yourself out of the floodplain, you had to get an elevation certificate. Those were not easy to get, because there weren't a lot of them being written. So for instance, you know where RNA glass is, out on one sixteen? In order for him to build, he had to get an elevation certificate. I, and, and one, in one case, you think, well, we're, we're doing this. On the other case, what I'm gonna tell you is, every insurance agent out there who's going to try and get federal flood insurance for their client is gonna be asking these questions. And if it doesn't answer, if, if it doesn't follow the guidelines that we're doing, they're not gonna insure it. Well, if they don't insure it, there are people who have the money just to build, but there are an awful lot of people who are gonna get a loan.
So, so Roger, in this case, even if this gentleman raised his his house up, his trailer up, it'd still have the issue with, with the septic.
You're, you're absolutely correct.
You can't fix that in, in a, you know, so I don't know, yeah, okay.
So that's a hard part, right, for me, of, when we look and listen to Martha, we had a licensed wastewater system permitted, and we have notes in our system showing we measured and we were taxing and then, you know, and there was a structure there in twenty seventeen. And so the floodplain maps were prior to that, it's like, it just doesn't ma- it just doesn't.
There, there wasn't a structure there in twenty seventeen. It was in two thousand eighteen that they started moving it in.
I, I, I'm gonna pull, I can't remember the exact date for the note.
Looking on to get the data.
Um, it's when we go out and like we measure and put the notes in on our, um, on our system under the praiser and, um, the map search, when we put our notes in, hold on, let me just pull it up.
So this, this, this floodplain that we're seeing here, is that, that's, as far as you know, that's been the same for? I don't know.
Two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen, okay.
Since two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
So December twenty-second of twenty seventeen.
Oh, December twenty-second, okay. We're close to eighteen, we didn't notice the structure until two thousand eighteen.
Different mobile home.
We had notified the previous owner to get rid of the, of the mobile home, because it was in the floodplain. And so it's, it's kinda like this. Uh, you deal with right-ofways and stuff that's built on the right-ofways and things that are where they're not supposed to be, and if you finally get somebody out of there, and then the next person moves in and comes back and puts it right back out there on the right-ofway and says, yeah, but the previous guy had it here all this time.
So.
We were doing the same thing, that's why we removed the address, that address was on it. We got the other person to move out their mobile home, and then we took the address away from it.
Okay, see, I like that, because that, that shows that the county acted prior on this, on the exact same situation. See, to me, that helps the county case. So regardless of the status of this right now as a sentence, there's a previous case where they tried to right the wrong. The owner, the property owner turned right around and sold it to an individual. And, and so that explanation helps me a lot, it helps me understand why you, you can't just, you know, randomly, you know, uh, give variances for, for, for situations like this, because you know, in the past, this particular property was already addressed, this was already addressed.
Yes.
And, um, I mean, it's, it's sad, but it's on the previous owner, the, the owner that, that sold this property, that, you know, the previous person that had the, the, uh, structure there before, went and sold this property to an individual and didn't say anything, apparently, they didn't.
So help me understand the difference between a mobile home and the single-family home, cause say this was a single-family home, and if you look at your floodmap along, there's several single-family homes that might be in the floodplain, right?
Correct.
Can you just go out and say, oh, you're in the floodplain, we're gonna need you to move that structure off there?
No. Uh, but, but there are a set, there are sets of rules, and ag- and again, and I would love to go through all of those with you, but in simple response, and, and do understand, anytime I make simple response, I risk saying something just a little bit incorrect, but as a general rule, I'm generalizing things, okay? As a general rule, anyone who is in the floodplain at the time the floodplain is, is established then has a, what you would call grandfathered, we call, they become a non-conforming use. Non-conforming properties can continue to be flood insured as long as they continue to be occupied. Once they're vacated for six months or substantially destroyed by some means, at that point, then they have to bring themselves into conform, into conformance, okay? And that is to allow those people who are in that situation to do it. But once it's, uh, its use discontinues for six months, then it becomes, uh, it loses its right of non-conformity. In this case, they totally moved the trailer. And then he moved another one back in. And that's, that's just a totally different structure. So if there was a house there and somebody bought it, you, you need to check and see where it is, and you also know that I have brought to the commission uh, that we find all these conditions with sites out in the county. And I came to you one time and said, why, why don't we just take all these and why don't we, you know, file a resolution with, uh, with the commission that can then be given to the register of deeds, then it'll attach to every one of the parcels of these? And we said, no, that isn't a good idea, we don't want those affecting all their titles, right? So instead, what we do is we maintain a problems parcel database that is available to the general public under our maps on the county website that if you click on maps under citizen input or citizen communication, whatever it is, then it brings up a map color-coded based on what their type of issue is, and if you click on it, you'll see that this lot is listed as being unbuildable in the floodplain. We do that. Now, does everyone know that's there? No. Uh, no one knows, and, and buying properties, there is also always a risk involved, and that's there. Do understand, I don't wanna be an enforcement agent who goes out and does things, for the most part, I don't wanna be enforcement agent at all. I tell people, we issue these permits, and we're nice guys, cause we don't even charge anything for them. And we'll process them usually within a day or two. Now, I've also told you that we've added on the sanitation side, the driveway side, the address side, we've issued, we've added on so many other things to it. But the whole issue was, we don't wanna be bad guys, we wanna be nice guys, we wanna help people, but we want more, as, as often as not, we hear, well, why didn't somebody tell us about? More as as often as not, we hear, well, why didn't somebody tell us about this? We hear that all the time, and the thing is, we can't tell you about it if you don't come in. Another thing we added to it was the NRA, the Neighborhood Revitalization Act. Well, we got so many people who said, well, we don't even know. About the Neighborhood Revitalization Act. Who, you know, who's supposed to tell us about this? Well, if you come in and apply for the permit, it's no cost. Then we'll tell you about all these things. Now, there may be costs to other things, but there isn't for the permit. And now I would say we're getting. Eighty ninety percent compliance with it. And when we find someone who's not, we get in touch with them. We get structures that people put up and then put in their own septic system without ever going to getting a permit from Martha. What do we do then? Well, it has to be brought into compliance because you all signed a resolution with the state of Kansas that says. You will make sure that these things all follow this set of rules. And then we have Martha on it and she goes out and she has to get. Someone to work with that, it cost them more money than if they'd have done it right in the beginning. I hate to say that, but that occurs. From my standpoint, the main thing I'm after here is to say, now, first of all. The guy hadn't requested anything, and so I don't wanna grant him something until he at least comes in and and makes the request. But other than that, I wanna make sure that we're setting up a system that. Whether it's me or someone else. That they know that there's a set of rules that we are gonna be dealing with and and there are gonna be exceptions to those rules. But I don't want them coming to you first for the exceptions before they come to us to find out what's going on.
No, absolutely.
Uh, and and so I'm saying. I wanna feel comfortable speaking with you and warning you that we're doing this. And so this person may come to you and complain, but if they do, understand, we're communicating with them. But at the same time, what I don't want you to do is take that out from under us and then just start dealing those on your own out here, because. Because it won't take long for word to travel.
Yeah.
That here's the place to come and not over there. Now, I don't mind that at all, but you're not gonna like that.
And um. Just a couple of things on issuing addresses. On the issuing of addresses, what are the parameters for that? Like if somebody comes in and asks for an address, I would like to new, a new address. What's the process of that? Cause you said we we're not holding addresses, we'll issue addresses.
Well, first of all, to get an address, the address is part of the development permit, you gotta tell us what what you're doing. And the reason why, used to be, we just issued addresses everywhere. And and when I say we, I mean, before my time. Uh, they'd issue addresses anywhere, well, let's say you've got a quarter of an acre, uh, excuse me, a quarter of an acre. Let's say you've got a quarter section of ground. And somebody would come in and say, well, I'm gonna put a barn, I'm like, give me, give me an address on that. So, well, you're on. Two sixty second and Rollins Road, which one are you gonna put the driveway on? Well, I don't know yet. Just give me an address and then I'll figure out where I'm gonna put it. Well, the problem is, what has happened? Uh, in nineteen ninety one, all of this stuff started with the nine one one system. And you know what, we have a a nice, I presented a forty five minute presentation on the nine one one system and how we got there. But what does occur is that. They set up rules, and part of the rules are that we have to have addresses on everything there. The roads all have center lines, the center lines have address ranges on them, and the addresses are listed according to those. The directional systems that come out. Basically, when they get in the car and they head out, they don't know whose house they're going to, in the old days. It was, hey, roll route number four, the postman knew everybody, hey, we're going to Bob Jansen's place. Uh, they don't know that anymore. You've got a crew out there that gets in the car, they head out the driveway and it says turn right. And. When they get there. This number that's in the system for their driveway should take them. To the drive area in which they're supposed to get off the road to go in, because you can't see the houses from the road. We just had one in yesterday. That we're issuing a uh, an address for today. For um. Bill Shipley. And he's getting ready to build and he's going across his father's uh farm. Over to his, where he wants to build a house, and he says, well, I'm I wanna build right here, and I said, well, where's the driveway we're gonna be? Well, I haven't decided yet, I said. You need to decide. Because. If you're entering up here or down here, we need to address accordingly, so that. An emergency vehicle knows where to go. If you're using your dad's driveway, it ought to be real close to the same number. Right? These are the things that we go through, and and when we tell them, they can say, oh, well, that makes sense. And they usually end up very happy about what's going on. Um, we issue addresses for irrigation pivots. Well, almost every one of those is in a floodplain. I, you just got all these things you issue for, but when it comes down to occupied residential structures. There are a lot of rules in the book. On and and. A week's training, you come back with a couple of binders that thick. On what has to happen. Now, do I know all the answers? No. But I know the people to call to get all the answers. And so, when we run into problems and they truly, and I know what the problem is. We are not shy about getting ahold of people and saying. How can we handle this? Where can we go from here? Every once in a while. Their stubbornness can be. Every once in a while, I have a problem with it equally. But most of the time, it's acceptable, and and I'm gonna tell you, there are. Two percent of the cases out there. That I just can't rectify with them what they've done either, and every once in a while I have to say. Crap, I hate this as much as you. But I can't do this, this, or this. But on all the others, you have to say. Come on, this is gonna be an easy fix, do something else. I can justify telling the guy fifteen hundred bucks. I know it seems terrible. But you got three quarters of an acre for fifteen hundred dollars, almost anybody will buy that. Even if you can't put a house on. I just can't justify saying, put a house in where. It's clearly in the floodplain, it might be a disaster. Now, even if you grant a variance, he can't necessarily get flood insurance. And in the rules, one of the things it states. Is, and and again, first of all, I have to find out, because when you start saying a variance, I have to find out. Who can grant a variance, cause it doesn't really stipulate in here. But it says, even if a variance is granted. The penalty for flood insurance can be up to twenty five dollars per hundred dollars of coverage. Now. You think, look, that's only a twenty five percent, no, that's saying, if you wanna dance shirt for ten thousand dollars, your annual premium would be twenty five hundred. So, I I don't know all the answers, I don't contend to, I just wanna make it in such a manner that. When we're all through, I can be consistent with people when they come in. And know what to do and still make it manageable so that. Uh, you all are getting what you want and we're making things happen like you want.
So I don't think, us, we couldn't give a variance that would supersede any KES from permitting a septic system. I mean, we couldn't supersede their process either.
I seriously doubt that you can, and that's why I say I would need to check.
Right.
But Martha came over and spoke with me, cause we we deal with Martha all the time, and in fact, I've dealt with Holly on this very same issue and said. Uh, because you were looking at that, th- there's no secret, I go to her and say, you're looking at something that says, we inspected this property on these days. And how did we inspect it and not tell the guy then? Well, we didn't, number one, we didn't have any address or information on the guy. And so. When that occurred, we talk about it and and we start saying, wait a minute, we've gotta get our communication all down. But she's saying, I'm gonna put it on the tax rolls, whether it's le- legal or not, it's gonna be on the tax roll. So he's on the tax roll. He just doesn't have an address and he isn't currently in a position where I can justify saying you can stay unless you can take care of some things. Uh.
That that just made it more confusing for me.
I.
And so we're taxing him, we're taxing him, but he can't legally be there, I, to me.
We go out once every six years for our re inspections and. Within there, if we go out and we find something on on a parcel, we're gonna go ahead and pick it up and we're gonna go ahead and add it to the tax rolls, it's more value that we're adding in. And then what I didn't realize though was, in in previous years, that nobody was going down and saying, hey. Are you guys aware that there's new structures? So then that's. That's now what I'm trying to get. The girls into, we need more better communication, so that way, when when these issues arise, they're all being treated consistently.
That's the, that's a good point, that's what we're, that's kinda what line we're on is is consistency and. First, there's, you know, there's. Structures that are there that came in, that were there years before. All this was mapped out, you know, the floodplain was was put in here, so. Those are a separate issue. But, you know, Roger, when you talked about, there's, there was a gap. Between this structure here and the previous structure. And, you know, it it. To me, that. Nullifies, you know, even thinking about a variance, because. At that point, the, it was addressed, you know, there was, there was, there was a point where that property. And and having a a structure on it was addressed. It wasn't passed on to this individual, that's not our. Problem. But then what bothers me is if this guy says, I'm gonna come back and. Force the issue. By the way, you're taxing me. So now I'm going, okay, boy, that's just more ammo for this guy, you know?
But we have statutes that we follow too, as of January one, what's there is taxable.
Yeah, I know, I I I I get that, but it's just. I don't know, I I I would, I would enter to the side of probably not granting. You know, the address, but then you 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 mentioned the tank. So then, then what? You've gotta act on that, because technically, if it's in a floodplain. That's a danger, you can't have it, you know, sitting.
But at least you've warned them at that point. But it is in the floodplain. And that you're not taking liability with. Your loss of property or life. Uh, I just, I again.
I get it.
I I think we're also.
I don't know the answer.
Ass- assumption that they're gonna apply for an address, well, if they don't gonna ever intend on getting mail there, if it's a. A holiday uh resort, or I'm just there on the weekends, or I have a box at the Cummings Post Offices, which is a city block away.
Yeah.
They're not gonna apply for that, they can get under the radar screen, and we're not gonna catch them on the address, the application for an address.
Well, but but then, does he hook up his own? You know. Septic, we have to deal with that.
Must have, and may maybe use the old septic system that was there from the previous trader, we don't know, but if they haven't ever. Applied, if they've never been caught in the system, it's like they're flying under the radar on all of these things.
Right.
One last question before we wrap up, um, as far as northeast Kansas Environmental Services. Are you familiar, what is the um wastewater makeup in Muskota? Do you know? Are they on city sewer?
They have a, they have a city sewer system, as a matter of fact, we have a. I think we've got Muskotas on there. If you go to under citizen input, the maps.
Mm-hmm.
There's a sewer. I think it's got Muskota sewer lines on there.
So, do they have like lagoon?
I don't know what they're treating, yes, they've got a a huge.
Treatment.
Treatment area south of town.
Yep, and that's in the.
And actually. And we issued a, an address for that just recently.
So, I'm just like, that's concerning for the environment.
Well, that would have been under that. Both they had the the goons there much before the.
Well, it's.
The floodplain.
However, however, it's in the floodplain, but but the dykes actually come up above the floodplain, don't they?
Yeah, yeah.
I, it's just from.
No, I I fully agree with what you say.
Like, we have an entire city.
We didn't.
I I think you're trying to do, you you you're just trying to do the right thing and you have to, and we're doing it. I mean, that's what we're doing, that's why we're.
I love having these conversations though, because these are the questions, right, from from the common sense.
Right.
Standpoint of like, what are we doing?
Trying to understand.
You gotta have more people building in the county, you know, and if there's a way to give a variance when we know it's not gonna flood, or no one in the area has seen it, you know? Let's get people.
Yeah.
Building, or you know.
Building safely.
What I will say to you is, and I knew there was a reluctance to go to any kind of permit. But what, two things the permits have done, number one is, they now notify. The appraisers of where new properties are going. The other thing they do is, they give people an awful lot of information that they didn't understand. Because I can tell you, at least. Ten properties a year are getting ready to build somewhere that they've gotten illegal access. And then we have to say. Go talk to these people before you build. To make sure you can get an easement to where you're going.
And I know, I I've had an incident where, when the. Cost that they had to pay for their permit, their driveway permit and everything, and she called and was railing at me. And then, oh, we got busy about, she was building a new house, and I'm going, I said, did you apply for the NRP? She didn't know anything about it, cause I, and I addressed it, it was before you came. And it's like, by having those conversations and having to go for the permit, she had no idea that program was there. And building a new house, a nice new house, what that actually.
Sure.
Save, and I'm, you know, and and other things gets them off on the needing their sewer, get their permit. Having someone come to see the site before you build a house or, because there's been instances that they tell about all the time. When the only place left, they had the house built, we're ready to move in, we need to put in a sewer. The only place they could put it is in their front yard. That was in Jackson County, several of them. The way that the the house was kinda on a hill and it was flattened out in front, there was no place to, so. They had a septic system in their front yard and uh, so the the permitting. Even though people see it as a hindrance, it's, it is, saves them a lot of things, hopefully. From being in a flood or putting their septic system or their house in the wrong place. You have to s- look at the, what it's helping the the people to.
Yeah, no, I just appreciate the conversation, cause it's. It's good, and it allows people to understand. Where and why we come from, where we come.
And a lot of lagoons, they're not on their property at all. They're on somebody else's property, and those are all out there on the pro- problem parcel. Identification, when we find them. But there are a lot of those, not just a couple.
Yeah.
I'm talking double digits.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks, Roger.
Okay, so, non-elected, uh.
Is this the one?
Yeah.
Thirty minutes, pre-commissioners, HR.
Finance, HR counselor, yeah. And on, um. I think I I can abbreviate it, so let's do twenty minutes.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
I'll move the board of county commissioners recessed to executive session. At.
One sixteen, one fifteen, sixteen, sixteen.
Uh, PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in twenty minutes in the commission room of the Florida House Basement, and those present will be pre-commissioners, HR. Finance Director and County Counselor.
Okay, I will second, spin move in a second and all those in favor say aye, I pass this three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session, um, no notices and communications. No introduction or consideration or resolutions. Know their need for executive sessions. So with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn into a budget workshop with our finance director.
How long do you think that will be?
Until finish, yeah, oh, sorry, yes.
Not on the agenda, but we we do, uh. Uh, we had some trouble getting a date for the tax sale to work for everybody. Um, we had a couple of dates that. Some one person wasn't available with, or whatever, but we have all agreed upon. Um, the afternoon of May sixth. And Memorial Hall. So that will be our tax sale, May sixth.
On Tuesday.
Tuesday, at three P M. That, we did that last year, it worked out pretty well.
Okay.
Awesome.
So.
Can we put that on social media, Jody? Like, like a blast, if you don't mind, creating and so the public knows and then on our website.
Is that gonna be at Memorial Hall again?
Yeah, Memorial Hall, yes.
Perfect, thank you. I'd look for a motion to adjourn into budget workshop.
Some of them.
Moved in second and all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero.